Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 14th, 2015. Thank you for all attending tonight. We had really good attendance. Tonight, we have the honor and privilege of having Sergeant Andrew Taylor from the United States Marine Corps, who's home on leave, a 2007 graduate of North Andover High School, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So, we could all say...
(applause)
All right, raise your hand over your heart. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Andrew, don't go.
Thank you, sir.
So, as I said, Andrew was a 2007 graduate of North Andover High School. He is one of the proud members of the United Marine Corps who served at the North Andover. He is home on leave, and he's going back to camp tomorrow. So, he was gracious enough to come in tonight and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, we really, really appreciate that. And in appreciation of that, I'd like to present you with this certificate. And it says, "In appreciation of the volunteering to lead the society in the Pledge of Allegiance at the Board of Selectmen meeting, on behalf of the town of North Andover, we extend our utmost appreciation and recognition for your unselfish dedication and service in defense of our country and freedom," presented by the North Andover Board of Selectmen, April 14th, 2015. Awesome, Andrew. Thank you very much. (applause) Okay, great. So, next item on our agenda for tonight is, I would like to welcome, I did it earlier, but officially welcome our newest member of the Board of Selectmen, Phil DeColigero. Won his election two weeks ago. So, congratulations, Phil, and welcome to the board. With that...
Before you go on, and I'd also like to congratulate our Chair, who also won reelection, and thank you well for serving again.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so because of that, because we had one member leave and a new member come on, we do need to have a bit of a, a couple of reappointments that Bill Gordon had filled while he was on the board. So, we have to appoint a new clerk, and we have to appoint a member for the Appointments Subcommittee. So, do we have any motions for the office of clerk?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Rosemary Smedele as the clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
Second. Okay, we have a nomination for Rosemary Smedele for the clerk, and that will be to serve out the rest of this term, which would be until June of this year. End of June, right? Early July. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, does she accept, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I would have given her, she would have said something. She did. I know Rosemary well enough.
It's a very sweet done. Thank you for thinking of me. I appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we have a, to make an appointment to the Appointments Subcommittee. The Appointments Subcommittee, currently, Rosemary is a member of that Subcommittee. That Subcommittee interviews potential residents for filling seats on various boards that we have in town. So, do we have a motion in this case?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Philip DeColigero to serve on the Board of Selectmen Appointments Subcommittee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Philip DeColigero onto that Appointments Subcommittee. Any further discussion?
I accept that.
You accept that? Okay.
There's no choice.
No choice. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, great. So, that's a little housekeeping. The next item on our agenda is approval of our minutes from March 23rd. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from March 23rd, 2015, open session, minutes as written.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Our second, see, there's only three voting.
Okay. So, yes, there's only three of us that really can vote on this. Phil, you can't vote, and Tracy was not here. So, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? If I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's three.
Abstentions.
And two abstentions. So, that's three with two abstentions.
I have a plate.
Okay, communications and announcements. First of all, again, we have the privilege of introducing two new members of the staff here in North Andover. So, I will turn that over to Kathy for the introductions.
Good evening. So, I am very happy to introduce to you two of our new staff people. Our most recent addition to staff is Christopher McClure. Chris is our new IT Director. He comes to us from the town of Hopkinton. He has over 10 years of municipal experience. In addition to all of his technology background, he was pivotal. He was the manager of the 2014 Boston Marathon Security and Communication Technology Team. So, I introduced you, Chris McClure.[346.63][346.63](applause) Chris has been here about five days, and we had gremlins in the server today, and all these other odd things. So, welcome!
Welcome, Chris.
And he still came. And he's still here.
Yes.
And thank you, and welcome to the staff. And we look forward to working with you. Any comments you want to make, or anything you want to add to that?
Sure.
Well, it's an honor and a privilege. I don't have much to say now. As Kathy pointed out, I've been here about five days. But so far, I'm impressed by what I've seen, and very impressed by the personnel here, and the teams, and the culture. And I look forward to doing great things with the town of North Andover.
Welcome.
I'd also like to introduce to you our new Assistant Library Director, Natalie Hardy. Natalie started on March 24th. She comes to us from the town of Bloxford, where she was the head of reference. And before that, in a previous life, she was the library director in Groveland. And she has many, many years of experience in various municipal libraries. So, we're very happy to have Natalie in this position, Natalie Hardy.
Thank you. Welcome to you, Natalie, and thank you for joining the staff here in North Andover. Hope things go well with you. Would you like, any comments?
Thanks for the nice welcome. And I've been here for three weeks, so longer than five days, but I'm still, you know, getting my feet wet. And hopefully, I'll see many of you at the library. Come by and say hello.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
My pleasure.
Okay, next, communications and announcements. John Simons from the Community Preservation Committee with the FY16 recommendations. Did you know you were going to be that close up on the agenda, huh?
I know, geez.
You looked a little shocked.
(inaudible).
Okay, sounds good. I don't know if everybody has the list or the material, but if...
Yes.
Okay, good.
They both request John and the approval.
Oh, see.
They're both.
Oh, okay.
They both have glitches.
Okay. Just for the record, my name is John Simons, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm planning to go as much or as little into detail as you want tonight. I do have a list of each of the projects that we've approved and a short summary of them. I can run through them, or if you would prefer to ask questions in individual ones.
I think we could start out with a short summary of each of the projects.
Okay, good, okay. First project on the list is $100,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust. And this is a little bit of a twist of what our past practice has been. And one of the problems that we have with the affordable housing component of CPC is that if projects come up between town meetings, we're not in position to be able to fund those projects because the timing has to be exactly right. So, we're trying, as an experiment, to contribute $100,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust, which can opportunistically go in and buy properties in between town meetings. We have proposed certain conditions as part of that, that when a project comes up and the trust wants to go after it, they have to come back to us for approval. And also, that we would like them to spend the money in the one-year period, because we don't want them to build up a backlog of money. So, that's basically the context for that request.
That's great.
I don't know if there's any questions on that. Next project is the Bradstreet Memorial. I never actually knew that there was a very large stone block which has the Bradstreet School listed there. But the idea of the Historical Society is to form, to have a memorial for all of the, what I'm going to call the Departed Schools of North Andover, with that as a centerpiece of it. And it's gotten a lot of support from both the school committee and the Historical Commission in town, as well as obviously Historical Society, which is proposing it, so.
And John, where will that memorial be? Is that location?
Well, that is TBD. (laugh) You know, like a lot of other things, sometimes the location of those things. I mean, I think we would like to have it in a central location that people can see and learn about the history of the community. But it hasn't been decided yet where it's going to be at.
Are you working with the school committee on that? I would assume it'd be school grounds.
Yes, the school committee, yes. I mean, Stan Lempert's the champion of it. So, this is, you know, he's really wearing two hats on this. So, I think it works out pretty well, so.
I would expect that if the location is not on school property, that we'll have Stan or representatives of the group come and talk to the board about some possibilities.
Great. I think that's a great idea, to memorialize that school.
Yeah, I think it is. And I mean, when then people start talking about all the other schools and the pieces of the schools that are still left in different parts of the town, it's very interesting. It's, you know, and I think most people don't know that. So, I think it's great to be able to do that. I think they learn a lot about the past of the town, so. Next project on the list is the Middle School Athletics Complex. I think everybody well knows that that's underutilized. There's extraordinary amount of potential opportunity there. And this is just to do a feasibility study. And what I like particularly about the approach, I think the committee really liked about the approach, is that it's to foster the maximum amount of town input. Because the direction we go in is going to be dependent on what people want. And so, the process is going to focus on that, so. Next item is the Franklin School Playground. Last year, when we talked about playgrounds, we had an exciting discussion. I think this, I hope, is far less contentious. I think that, if you remember last year, we funded the Sergeant School Playground, and the issue of equity came up between that and the rest of the schools and playgrounds. And so, what we ended up doing, really, under the leadership of the town manager, was to commission a study by a landscape architect to evaluate and inventory all of the playgrounds in town. And I think that was a piece of it. But I think the other piece of it that was as important is that all the stakeholders, including all the school PTOs, were involved in that process. And they agreed on the process. They agreed on the results of the process, and they agreed on the priorities. In fact, tweaked the priorities a little bit. And the idea was that we would take the school or the town municipal playground that had the most need. We would do that first, and then in succeeding order. This still enables PTOs or local communities that want to contribute additionally to this fund. This is the baseline funding of $100,000. And if the schools want to throw money in on top of that, they can do that. In fact, we hope that they do that. Franklin was first in the list. So, we, this is the project we're going forward this year, so.
They just had a successful fundraiser several weeks ago, in fact, right where they raised, I'm trying to search for my email. The number 30,000 is in my head, but...
That's, yeah, that's what I mean. And so, I think we're, I think it'll be exciting, and they'll be excited about it. So, I think that's, you know, that, one of the things we like to see with CPA is to have private money as well as the public money. And this is, I think, a good example of that, so.
Agreed.
So, the next item, on to the second page of my notes, is the Main Street Fire Station renovation. I know there's going to be a longer presentation about it tonight. But I think the model for CPA funding is just about exactly the same model as for the restoration of this building. Basically, the CPA funded the windows, the exterior, the brick, the historical features of the building. And that's what we'd like to do for this project as well, so.
Okay.
Next item on the list is the Ridgewood Cemetery Restoration. And this is really a very systematic, broad-based project to refurbish the entire cemetery. I think one of, two points that I'll make about Ridgewood is that, one, what I think most people in town don't realize is that every city in town and the Commonwealth has to make a provision for a cemetery. And we do not have a municipal cemetery in North Andover, and Ridgewood effectively functions as that. And if they didn't do that, then the town would have to do it itself. So, they provide a quasi-municipal function. The other thing that I wanted to mention about Ridgewood is that we have done a number of smaller projects with Ridgewood over the last number of years. And one of the things that we did is to, again, commission a study by a landscape architect of what the long-term needs and requirements were. And this is really the outgrowth of that. This is the core work of that. And if, you know, if you go into Ridgewood and are there, you know, during the Memorial Day celebrations, you notice there's actually a lot of erosion there. There's a lot of subtle deterioration that's come over the years that you might not notice if you're driving along Salem Street. But in fact, there's problems with the gravestones, particularly related to erosion. The roadways are beginning to crumble and so forth. So, this is a comprehensive program to restore it to its glory. If you're interested, there are a couple of members of the Ridgewood Cemetery Board, Jim LeFond and John Smolik are here, if you have detailed questions about this.
No.
Okay, then moving along, Stevens Estate. There's two small projects for the Stevens Estate. This, first is bathroom restoration. And I think anybody that's ever been there and seen the state of the bathrooms at Stevens Estate understands why we need this. I think it restores the building to its historical estate, but it also prevents much more deterioration because the plumbing and the leakage and so forth is starting to deteriorate the bathrooms. And this gives us a chance to restore them to their grandeur. One of the things that impressed me was that there's a lot of great historical features in those bathrooms that we would want to preserve. And that, when you look at those 1950-style bathrooms that are in there, you almost lose that historical feel to the bathrooms, so. And this, again, was a project that was on the master plan for Stevens Estate. So, it's part of the long-term enhancement program there.
And how many bathrooms will this?
The ones on the second floor, the second-floor bathrooms.
Oh, great.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And also make it a more attractive venue.
Well, that's it. It's, we generally don't fund our projects for Stevens Estate because of the hospitality use. But this is a case where it'll benefit both. So, it's, I think it's a double win there, so.
John, are they keeping some of the historical features to the bathrooms? Because...
You bet. Brad is...
There's some things that look like a barracks.
Brad is all over that one. We're going to put a condition in that certain things be preserved. Because there really are some very magnificent features in those bathrooms.
Yeah, to period, but then, there is, there are some shower stalls that look like a barracks.
(laugh) It's actually quite a shock when you see it for the first time, so, yeah.
Should we note that the Stevens Estate Enterprise Fund is contributing funds to this project as well?
Yes, correct, yeah. And I think one of the things in line with that is, we, every year, we meet with Stevens Estate because we had mentioned a few years back that we didn't want to finance all the capital improvements, that some of them had to come from the cash flow of the state. I think this is, as Andrew said, a good example of that, where some of the money for these improvements are coming from the ongoing profit and loss of the facility, so. The other Stevens Estate project is the Carriage House stabilization. And there, what our intent to do is to stabilize the carriage house for a number of years, so that there's no further deterioration in the roof, in the windows, in the siding, so that we can make a clear-cut decision about, in the long term, do we want to utilize that part of the facility more fully, or do we want to let it go? And frankly, if we don't do anything, the risk is that it'll deteriorate too much, and we won't be able to use it in the future. And this was really what we think is the minimum triage amount that would take to preserve the estate or the carriage house. And then, the last two items is, we are required under CPA to put 10% of our money in for the three purposes: affordable housing, open space, or open space and recreation, and historical preservation. The only housing project we had is $100,000, we just mentioned, for, so we have to top that off with the amount for the reserve. So, that's where the 87.8K comes. And lastly, we have allocate $30,000 a year for administrative expenses. We tend to underspend that. But this is for appraisals and things of that nature. The study that we did, the landscape architect for the, looking at all the recreation facilities, came from our administrative money last year, so. There is plenty of money in the fund to cover all these projects, and we did not hold back as a result of that. There were a couple of, you know, obviously, Andrew mentioned that there were a number of projects that we did not fund. There were a couple of land projects that the timing wasn't right on those, that we passed. We may come back in a future year to look at them again. But right now, it was, they weren't really quite ready. And there were several other projects that we chose for a variety of reasons not to fund, so. Any questions?
I think it's a great list of...
I think it's so beneficial to the community at all different levels. And I just think it's a great list.
Yeah. So, we're excited. I mean, it's, what I like particularly, and I think the other members of committee like, is that everybody comes in front of us, has a common purpose, to preserve the quality of the community. There's a lot of volunteer effort, a lot of enthusiasm, and it's reflected in the project, so.
That's great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
I just love these.
So, next on the agenda are the citizens petitions. But I'm going to use a, the Chairman's prerogative here and interject one thing, because I, we have a really good attendance right now. And I have a feeling that might clear out a little bit after those petitions are over. So, I want to just make a brief announcement. Tomorrow marks the second anniversary of the Marathon bombings. And Boston Mayor Marty Walsh is asking municipalities around the Commonwealth to observe One Boston Day, which is intended to focus not on one city, but on the entire region, as a day to honor and remember all those affected by the tragic events of April 15th, 2013. We're inviting residents to join us tomorrow in observing One Boston Day by performing random acts of kindness or participating in activities, and encourage individuals and groups to give back to their community through service or volunteerism. And that's an initiative that Mayor Walsh has asked for. And he's also asked that if you do, anything that you do do, if you hashtag that, One Day, One Boston Day, they would, that would show up on their, on their Twitter feed. And in remembrance of all the victims, all the North Andover Municipal and school buildings will be observing a moment of silence at 2:49 tomorrow. I believe we also have some cooperation with some of the local churches. They'll also be ringing their bells at 2:50 in remembrance of those victims. So, thank you for all you do to build the community and make North Andover a special place. I just wanted to get that announcement in. And thank you for bearing with me on that. So, please, let's all try to remember that and be kind to one another tomorrow and every day. So, thank you.
Okay, so next, we'll talk about the citizens petitions. We have two citizens petitions on the agenda for this year. One of them will be Article 30, changing the voting age to 16 for town elections. This is being presented or suggested by Celia Salvo, Adam Magletta, and Joy Duboff. Do we want to, oh, Celia, you going to speak to it?
That's all right.
All right, great.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to speak in front of you today. I'm Celia Salvo. I live at 179 Coventry Lane. I'm 18 years old. I'm a registered voter. We're here. We have a quick five-minute presentation to inform you all a little more about the citizens petition we've put forward to allow 16, 17-year-olds to vote in town elections. I'd just like to point out, one of the main reasons that I'm here, other than obviously caring for this cause, is as being 18 and being registered, Adam and Joy, who also care for this cause a lot, would not be able to put this on the town warrant without me, because they aren't 18, and they aren't registered to vote or allowed to vote by being under 18. So, a brief history of the evolution of voter eligibility in this country and this community. It wasn't too long ago, the only people that were allowed to vote were white males of a certain religion, certain age, and who owned property. And I would guess they wouldn't have ever believed that those restrictions or those qualifications would have differed. They believed they would have carried on through the next generations. And later, it was expanded that women were allowed to vote, African-Americans, other minorities. And also, about 40 years ago in the 70s, the voting age was dropped from 21 to 18. Internationally, there are many other countries that allow 16, 17-year-olds to vote, just to name a few: Scotland, the United Kingdom, Germany, Austria. And around here, it's been something that people have wanted recent, in the last recent years. Lowell has put forth something similar. They voted on it. They presented it to the City Council. It passed eight to one, but it later died in the legislature. And there's a movement going on now to allow this to happen. Our State Representative, Diane Gisaglio, has already signed off on it. And I believe that we, as a town, because this is something that is on the rise, should be one of the first ones to pass it. And we can be ahead of the curve. There are many 16 and 17-year-olds out there now that are already involved. They've been working on political campaigns. They're knowledgeable, even more so than people that are two, three times their age. And I believe strongly that they should be allowed to have the option, at least, to vote if they want. With that, I'll turn it over to Joy.
I am Joy Duboff. I live at 31 Carney Circle. I'm 16 years old and a junior at the high school. And one of the main points in opposition to our petition is that 16 and 17-year-olds don't have the maturity or the education to be able to make informed decisions and to vote. But I would like to say that, as we come here before you, it shows that we do have a certain level of maturity. And in regards to the education, most 16 and 17-year-olds today are more educated than the white property-owning males that Celia referred to earlier. Another issue would be that we don't pay taxes, but that is actually incorrect, as we do pay state and federal taxes. As we pay our income tax, all three of us pay gas tax, and we also pay sales tax. But to not allow us to vote because we don't pay taxes, because not every 16 and 17-year-old will be paying income taxes and gas taxes, would still be a violation of our civil rights with the abolishment of the poll tax with the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And then, another point I would like to bring up is that if you are 18 years old and you move to this community, like, just a week before Election Day, you would be allowed to vote, having not contributed to the community, having not been informed, but just because you are 18 years old. Whereas, someone who's 17 years old, a week from turning 18, would not be allowed to vote, despite having been active in the community and having been informed. And a lot of people may think that we have an ulterior motive or some agenda in doing this. But our only agenda is to allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in municipal elections. And all three of, if we had been able to vote in this past election, all three of us would have cast vastly different ballots. So, to say that we have a certain agenda would be incorrect.
My name is Adam Magletta. I'm 17 years old, and I live at 61 Carlton Lane. And I am also a junior at North Andover High School. Just a few short weeks ago, our community saw a local election that was contested, and had many different issues that were being debated, that have strong impacts on our communities and our families. Sadly, nine out of 10 registered voters in our community decided not to stand up and register their opinions, and decided to neglect their ability to vote. Only one in 10 registered voters in this town use the right that so many have fought for, for so many years. Statistics show that the earlier someone begins voting, the more likely they are to continue voting throughout the entirety of their lifetime. As we can see by the last election and by the current national trend, which corroborates the effects of the last national, of the last municipal election, we need an electorate that is going to be more involved in our local, state, and federal government. This petition, if ratified, would allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in municipal elections, thereby getting more people involved earlier on in the process, and making lifelong voters that are going to continue to contribute to our communities and make our town stronger. Lastly, I believe that municipal elections present a unique opportunity for 16 and 17-year-olds to develop a political consciousness and a political awareness devoid of party influence. A lot of municipal elections, less so than state and federal elections, issues and candidates are not exactly party-line-divided. A lot of times, issues in municipal elections will blur party lines, Democrats and Republicans working together. And in a lot of local elections, you don't even see the D or the R next to the candidate's name. And I think that this would allow 16 and 17-year-olds to really get the full picture... They would be able to gain a political consciousness and a political awareness that is their own, that is individual, and they can continue to represent with their ballots throughout their entire voting lives. Lastly, I would like to say that political awareness among youth is, I would say, something that spreads. I can tell you that just in the last few days, when I've been talking to my friends about the petition that I, that we are here speaking of today, several of them have told me, hey, the next time you have a political thing going on, let me know, get me involved. A few of them are here today, but several of them could not make it. This just shows that the idea that political awareness and political conscientiousness will spread throughout the 16 and 17-year-old population among those that truly want to learn about their government and their community. Due to the troubling and abhorrent results in our latest community and national elections, due to the statistics that show that earlier voting will lead to lasting voting, and due to the unique opportunity that municipal elections will allow 16 and 17-year-olds to develop a political conscious that is truly individual, we ask that the Board of Selectmen vote to give a positive recommendation to town meeting regarding Article 30, our citizen petition that we have brought to you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank all three of you, very well, very well stated. Are there any, do you have anything further, Celia, you wanna?
If you have any questions for us, we'll be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from the board at this point?
I would disagree that the results were horrible. I mean, so.
The word is abhorrent, and I believe that the 10% is an abhorrent number, considering the impact.
The turnout was horrible, the results not so much.
Either way, no, no matter, no matter what happens, I think that if people are, are talking about this, and I think if people are talking about town government, who otherwise really wouldn't be, I think you've already accomplished a big part of your goal. So, it's true, it is horrible that there weren't more people who chose to participate, and maybe this conversation will be the catalyst whether or not you're successful at town meeting, and hopefully that doesn't diminish your interest. So, good job, guys, I think, at the very least with getting people interested, so.
Yeah, and thank you again for all coming before us and presenting this. I think, obviously, you're all very well spoken, you've made your arguments very, very well. I would again open it to the board, are there any other questions or comments from the board?
The only thing I'd like to say, I do applaud you all for getting involved. I will probably be a no vote, but I really, I applaud you for getting involved and making a very clear, cogent argument. I could make arguments to the other, but you know, good for you. I, good for you.
I echo Rosemary's sentiments. I absolutely applaud you. I, I think that you should all be incredibly proud of yourselves, your parents and family should be incredibly proud of you, and I look forward to your future activism, although I'll be a no vote, too.
We respect your choices and the decisions that you made. There's a very important part to the democracy that we live in, and it's very important that everyone has the right to express those opinions in a meaningful way. What we've come forth to ask you for today is simply our opportunity to express ours.
You did a great job.
Very well.
You will do very well.
I'll be upfront, too, and I'll probably be a no vote, too. I have some concerns about that, the age, but again, you guys have done a fantastic job, and I think it really will bring the awareness to town meeting.
I very much look forward to you, seeing you all in front of us again, 'cause I think you'll be back.
The actual votes later.
Right.
So, we do have a pretty healthy crowd here tonight. I feel that some people may be here to express some comments on this article, and I'd like to open it up to the, to the, to the forum here, if they'd like to come up. I'd like you to try to keep your comments brief, and maybe if people have a spokesman for a group of people, that would be great, and so maybe, you know, we'll try to keep a little bit on time here, but are there anyone here tonight that would like to come up and express their comments on, on Article 30? Or come up? If you could come up to the podium and state your name and address?
Hello, my name is Christina Damian. I live at 30 Oxbow Circle, and actually, I'm an advocate for a group I'm involved in called Youth in Government. And basically, what it is, is that we sort of mock what we're doing right now, so we research all of our topics, and I'm going to tell you, I'm not surprised that people I'm with are going to be like the future leaders of Massachusetts or even the, the country, 'cause we're very involved. I don't think age is but a number. We do all the research, we know exactly what we're talking about, we're very, very, very well-informed in all the topics. We actually mock writing bills ourselves, and like, I was a lobbyist, and so I would go for and against bills, but I think that to say that an age should be like the barrier for what you guys are trying to accomplish here, I feel that there are a lot of us out there that really do know what we're talking about and really do, are passionate about political issues. I think that if we were given to a chance in the elections, that it would be very beneficial, not just to us, but to the whole community.
Mr. Tripp.
I'm opposed to this particular article. I think in general, these, these young people, I think, have done a great presentation here, and I applaud them for that. And I think for young people, they sound like they're very knowledgeable in what's going on in, in the local government, but I think in general, a lot of 16 and 17-year-olds in our high school probably have very little idea what the DPW does, or the Police Department, what their funding needs are versus maybe the schools or the fire department funding needs versus maybe the senior center, and how these would play off in budgets and so forth. And I think age is important, and we always have to pick an age, a cutoff, which is meaningful, 'cause you have to choose it to make decisions. And I just want to throw out some, some age-related cutoffs there. A 16-year-old cannot join the military. You have to be 18 unless you have the consent of a family member at 17. You have to be 18 to marry unless you have the consent of a parent. A 16-year-old cannot take out a loan from a bank to buy a car, or a boat, or a house. You have to be 18 to have a, a general license without restrictions. A 16-year-old cannot legally sign a contract and held, and be held responsible for it. And as we know, 16-year-olds are processed in the juvenile justice system for most crimes and not in the adult criminal justice system, and we all think that, that makes a lot of sense. And of course, if they are sent to jail, juveniles are not put in adult institutions. And, and we know 16 and 17-year-olds cannot purchase alcohol. So, there are age limits that our society has instituted in a lot of other situations, and I think I would argue that 18 is probably a reasonable age for voting in municipal and state and federal elections. So, I just want to have the, the board consider that when they vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Any other comments, or anyone else want to come up? So, we won't actually be voting on this at this time. We, we have a later agenda item where we are, we're actually voting on the articles in the, in the warrant, so this really is just a time for the petitioners to present their articles. So, again, thank you, Andrew, thank you, Joy, thank you, Celia, for coming up tonight. You're welcome to stay and for the rest of the meeting, of course. Any other comments from the board before we move to the next one? Okay, so we're going to move to Article 31, which will change the liquor license quarter in North Andover to allow all alcoholic beverages for the Cork Stop at 1593 Osgood Street. And I believe Sophia is not with us tonight, but, and congratulations.
Yes, yes.
To her and Nick, but we have Frank and, I'm sorry.
Valerie.
Valerie, tonight, from the Cork Stop.
I'm Frank Stamos, the wine director for the Cork Stop.
And I'm Valerie Gaderas Papentakis.
One of the co-owners, yeah. So, we've been operating for about seven months with a beer and wine license at 1593 Osgood Street. So far, business has been pretty good, pretty well-received by the area, and we're, come to a point where we felt there's a, a fit for us to expand to hopefully a full liquor license so that we can offer spirits, and that's why we're here as well today.
Yes, because wine is a wonderful way to end your evening or your week, but sometimes you need a martini, just for the sake of it. And there, between us, there's a mile either way distance where someone could, in terms of the liquor store, where someone could buy spirits, so it wouldn't really be affecting that much.
Any comments from the board?
What did we have for our child, a little girl or a little?
Girl.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I, well. Again, we'll be voting on that later, but thank you for coming and presenting that to us tonight. Any other questions from the board? No? Any, anybody here to speak on this article from, from the gallery here, from the audience?
Mr. Mayor, maybe you'll explain to the audience why we have to have this?
Oh, sure, that's great.
Because there is a limit?
The statute dictates the number of liquor licenses, both on-premise and off-premise, based upon population. There is some movement afoot to turn that authority back over to municipalities in the form of legislative amendment, but currently that isn't the case, so the only way that businesses can allow the town to exceed the permit levels or the license levels is to get, in essence, a town meeting vote and ultimately a relief from the legislature.
Great. Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, we're going to have a presentation on the expansion of the Town Hall and the renovation project.
So, Mr. Chairman, as, as the board is certainly aware, the facility master plan approved by Town Meeting in 2012 contemplated seven projects to be completed over seven to nine years, depending on how you looked at it. The facility master plan was a comprehensive look at all towns, facility, school, and municipal, and was, again, came from a citizen committee and ultimately the result. The next project, we have certainly successfully completed the Kittredge Gym Project, nearing the completion on the school administration project, about halfway through the completion of the new central fire station project, and next up is the renovation of the current fire station into expanded municipal spaces to return the community development folks from Osgood Landing back here to Town Hall. Present today, representatives, you certainly can introduce themselves, from both our own project management company, P3, and folks from Donovan Sweeney, who were involved with the, the fire station project, and now are also been engaged to do the architectural work on the Town Hall project. A working committee of employees and others provided feedback to determine the layout, the interior layout of the building. What is essentially in front of the board today is, is a review of the facade and what will be described as courtyard or the space directly in front of the building. The plan would be for, for the folks here to introduce a couple of concepts. These are plug-and-play concepts, so if there are aspects of one look that you like over another, or aspects of one you'd like incorporated, you can move some of these pieces around to a certain extent.
Oh, okay.
And then from that, have a community meeting where residents would be invited to provide their feedback as well, and then return back to the Board of Selectmen to get a vote for you folks to tell, direct the architects as to which facade you'd recommend. That would be the same also for what we'll describe as the streetscape or the courtyard. There'll be three scenarios there as well. So, again, there'll be a brief presentation from the folks in front of you, and then from that, engage in a conversation and questions associated with what's here, and, and they'll incorporate their feedback to make amendments to some of the recommendations here, and then proceed to a meeting of, of, a community meeting to get additional feedback. Again, in your package, there's also an interior layout that's been approved by the working committee, and I can certainly go into that if you'd like, but, but the folks in front of you will present formally the facade project. So, let's see if I can work on getting that on the screen.
Can I be in some of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I'm going to work on that. I'll take care of it. Let me see. It might take a second to come on, let's see if it does. So, the first up, you may want to maybe take the opportunity while this is powering up to introduce yourself, and I know you've been here before.
My name is Jeff Shaw. I'm the principal of Donovan Sweeney Architects.
I'm Chris Logan. I'm the project manager at Donovan Sweeney Architects.
Dan Palata. P3, we're the project manager.
So, as Andrew mentioned, we've been working for several months now, putting together design of this project, and really, what we're talking about is, is taking two separate buildings, built at two slightly different times, and combining them into one facility, one Town Hall for one town. And the idea, overarching idea behind this is that from a facade and the streetscape perspective, they need to look like one building. You need to approach it and understand where to enter the building complex, and then where to go from that point, and the town, the space in front really has to belong to the town, similarly to how it exists, it does existing now, but in a much more unified way. So, we're going to take this into two parts, and I'll do the first part about the facade, and then I'll let Chris handle the second part. So, you see in front of you the, the existing facade. I'm going to scroll a little bit further back in that, almost to the beginning. So, let's go to the photograph first, Andrew. Thank you. So, this is what it looks like today, actually, in the fall, and a couple of things I want to point out in this image here. Obviously, the fire station won't, won't be here, the genesis for this project, they'll be moved out. But you'll, you see, in terms of the facade of the building, if you just look at the brick parts, they're, they're really very similar-looking buildings. They're, they're almost creating a symmetrical concept around a, a center item that's a little bit different. So, if we move to the, the first drawing here, we've got three options to look at, and as Andrew mentioned, you can sort of pick and choose components from the various options as we go through them, what you prefer, what you, what you prefer to see. But in this option, we've composed it around retaining the existing fire apparatus base and infilling those with glass and sort of wood infill to recall some of the original fire department doors. And on the left-hand side, where the opening to the existing Town Hall, as we've de-emphasized that slightly, keeping the same opening size, but mimicking some of the fire station doors. And then in the center, retaining the low brick element with the existing precast cornice above it in the center, and then creating a much wider, more generous glass entry into, which would be a much, essentially the same courtyard, but renovated and expanded into a much bigger and nicer lobby for the expanded building. We retain the existing lighting stations that are on either side of the existing main entry, and we would add a new sign above the entry and a new entry canopy. In option B, I'll just go through three of these, and you'll see here, the biggest change is on the fire department side, where we've changed the window patterning to mimic the Town Hall look, so we really are creating, in this case, a symmetrical design, both the left and the right look very similar. We've also reconstructed the main entrance to the original Town Hall to have just a window in it, so that it matches the fire station. And then in the center, we're treating the center a little bit differently, where it has a much more geometrical canopy with, again, a new sign there, but in this case, it's filling the entire space with a precast element, with the letters are carved into it. And then finally, this design is a little bit more contemporary-looking, but in fact, the idea here is that it's recalling some of the maneuvers on the inside to recapture that courtyard into a light-filled space. This glass that you see would actually be very minimally detailed, so there wouldn't be like what the existing glass is on the back, where there's very large mullions, you wouldn't really see them, very clear glass as well, so you'd be able to see right through it, and you'd be able to see the brick wall on the other side, the existing brick wall on the other side, which actually comes down to the ground with two brick arched openings. So, even during the day, and especially in the nighttime, you'd be able to see the more historical elements behind, but a much more modern front face of the building, so it kind of tries to do both new and old. In this case, we would be also retaining some of the original. In this case, we would be also retaining some of the original lighting, and we happen to show this one with the symmetrical left and right fire station, existing Town Hall facades. Not sure if you want to talk a little bit about these first before we move on to the plaza, or go straight into the plaza.
It's almost a salmon color behind the door. Is that brick or is there something? Did you say you were covering what, some sort of-
On this design that you see in front of you?
Well, actually, isn't it on all of them?
It's because it's just the way they're shading the-
It's just the shading, so it is brick?
It's still brick.
It's still brick.
In the CPC project, it should be noted, is to acid wash the exterior.
Right.
If you looked at the exterior of the building today, the acid washed portion from 2004 is cleaner looking than the space on the right. So, this is really about depth, that colorization's really about depth.
Okay, that's good to hear. This is just a curiosity question. So, saying in design B, what would you call this type of design? Usually, different periods, there's a name to, you know, neoclassical or whatever. Is there a name to this?
Oh.
Just called municipal government design?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, what is it, the time period is 1800?
Yeah, the early 1900s. Turn of the century municipal architecture.
Okay, so pretty much what it's-
It's also, I think, reflects a lot of the bill buildings designed in this area, and it pulled details off of those, and it just, you know, it sort of became a marking in the town when you had this type of-
I'm really pleased that you're keeping, like, the older lighting and things like that, that, you know, it's nice to keep as much as you can, as long as it looks attractive. We don't keep it if it's just obsolete and ugly. I'm glad that you've incorporated that into the design.
From our perspective, I think dealing with an existing building is a great opportunity. We're not really interested in knocking things down just for the heck of it.
Gee, I'm a real supporter of that.
But in this particular case, I think the main thing that we are changing is the main entry, making it a little bit wider, so that it's a little bit more generous to come into the building. So, we are retaining a lot of the existing features of the main entry, but we may be rebuilding more in that area than we are anywhere else in the building.
You know what? At first glance, I'd have to say I'm pretty partial to design B, because it blends in with the architecture of Main Street. It's, it won't look like a refurbished firehouse. I think it's, I think it's appealing, I do.
I agree. I disagree with that. I like design A. I like the idea of maintaining that firehouse look, since it's been a firehouse for over 100 years. I like maintaining that look. But I also like the larger stone on the entryway on the, on design B, as a design element. So, I like, I definitely like the maintaining that firehouse look because of its, you know, the historic aspect of that, but I do like the stone on the first side. Design C, I would never, no. I don't like that glass look. I mean, I'm sure that might look some, good some other places, but I just don't like that particular look.
I agree.
You're getting some red talks updates, so you may be-
Just out of curiosity, I see where the entrance is. I'm trying to visualize what the inside looks like. Where do you have to go to get back to the old building?
The interior layout changes a portion of the existing building to better serve the layout of the new, but in fact, it's quite, quite a bit different in how you would experience the building. This plan that Andrew's showing here is the first floor plan, and at the bottom of this image is the doors to Main Street. And so, those are the doors that we're talking about in the center of the building. You'd enter through a small vestibule and into a square, essentially a lobby space that takes you left to the clerk and the tax collector, which is the same offices that are in that part of the building, but just reoriented to the center of the building, and then right to all the community development counter and all of their office space.
So, you've moved the existing offices?
They're in the same part of the building, but just where you, the counter space that you would walk up to is just reoriented to the side.
So, if I can talk about this a minute, one of the goals as part of creating a single Town Hall was to do two things. One was to make sure that the customer experience was such that they could walk into a building and do as much as possible from one space. So, if you look at the bottom, Don, if you look at the bottom of the screen, it says first floor, and travel through those doors just above it, that's the new center entrance. What you arrive into is a larger, what we can call vestibule, that to the right allows you access to planning counters, zoning counter, conservation, and building, and health. So, from that area to the right, you will have access to all of those departments in terms of permitting and staff members. Immediately to your left, in what is the yellow area currently there, the clerk and tax collector areas, which currently are on the first floor, will also have access from that space. So, a customer now will have the ability, the counters changed, so that they face inward as opposed to the street. That's the change. But today, a customer, or two years from now, a customer will walk in and have access to the most used departments simply by moving 10 feet in one direction or the other. From a cash management perspective, it means that if folks go today to the building department, where in most town governments, they can't pay a building fee, here they must pay the building fee, because otherwise they'd have to travel three miles down the street to pay it. So, affords us the ability to add efficient cash management. You get your building permit on the right, you pay for that fee on the left. It allows for the ability of residents to be serviced by most of our departments in one central area. And then behind that, quite frankly, it creates a courtyard, so if you travel further up the screen, the next space is a enclosed or covered courtyard, which is great congregation and meeting space, not formal meeting space, but an ability for Town Hall to become a destination point for people to get together with friends as they hopefully don't pay bills, but do other services and stuff.
When you go left, right?
If you go left-
Where's it coming out? You've got the tax office there.
You come back out through the front entrance or go back out the back entrance? We have, just like we have today. Today-
Eight feet there.
What's eight feet?
From the front door to the second door is only eight feet.
No, no.
Four steps.
No, no.
Go through the second set of doors.
Go through the second set of doors, and up those steps, and that's the treasurer collector area.
On the left.
In the yellow.
In the yellow.
You have to go up steps?
You have to.
So, handicap has to come in where?
No, so handicap, just like it is today. Today, in order for handicap access, you have to come in off the back, because we don't have a ramp off the front.
Okay.
So, it's the same access today. The elevator was situated or added in 2004, anticipating this day would eventually come. So, today, if you want to enter in to go to the clerk's office, as an example, you can't walk in the front door, because there's two, there's actually-
Three.
Three risers to get to that space.
Fire station is two feet below the first floor.
Correct. So, you'll come in off the handicap entrance off the back, the same way it is today. There is no change to that. The ability today is to access more departments, and behind that, what is hard to see from the shading is, there will actually be a direct stairway that'll go from that area beyond the vestibule directly up to the second floor opening back here, where the elevator is. So, you'll be able, today, when customers come in and want to go to the town manager's office, they have to take an interior staircase up to the second floor. It neither represents the building well, nor does it handle large crowds. Under this design, you'll walk in the dead center of the building, walk past that vestibule area into a larger 19 by 30-foot area, which would have some benches and some meeting space.
Light-filled.
Light-filled, and then be able to walk up a direct, wide stairway directly to this back area here if they were coming to a selectmen's meeting. So, that's the layout of the space. So, it may help in terms of sort of putting these in perspective.
Sure.
I would say if some additional direction, it seems like there's at least, at least two opinions about the, the doors, the fire doors. How about the feeling on the window on the left?
I think it looks like in the, in design A, that it's an, if you look on the left side where the current entrance of Town Hall is, it looks-
In design A.
In design A.
Yeah.
It looks like, you know, we just closed off a door, and it's just ending in the middle. So, as much as the right evokes doors, it undermines the, or actually, I guess it just accentuate, it just makes it look on the left more like it is a closed door, almost as if it's unfinished.
So, is there some consensus around the door slash window on the current Town Hall?
I don't think, I agree with Phil Decollagero that, that it, I mean, I don't want it to just have this big door that has no steps up to it. I don't know. I'm a fan of B. I don't like C at all, sorry, except for the sides.
I didn't tell anybody.
It's that big of a glass, I don't know. It just doesn't fit what's happening downtown and what will continue to happen downtown. I'm a fan of B. I really like the bigger stone, and I would prefer not Town Offices, but Town Hall, just because it's a little older school, I guess, I don't know. The signage, for me-
Town offices, no, no, we should say Town Hall.
Town Hall. I like, I like that, the bigger stone, and I like, I like the lights. I'm just a fan of B.
The one component that you probably didn't even realize, that the old Brad Street School did have a center hall that was light-filled, and that building is coming down, and I'm not a big fan of that, but it's nice to know that it's sort of being a little bit incorporated in the light-filled center that was originally in the Brad Street School. I understand what Selectman Valancourt is saying about keeping the look of the old fire station, and I do get that, but on first glance, I think this is more aesthetically pleasing. I do find, like, like Phil said, Selectman Decollagero, that that door is somewhat awkward to me. Maybe if you saw it for real, but it, in the sketch, it looks awkward.
The, I mean, I just throw this out food for thought. I mean, we do not have to do the same left and right as we're showing in these options. We could, I mean, admittedly, your opinions, you know, I want to take all of them into consideration, but we could have the fire station doors as they show in option A, but have the left side of the building as it shows in option B. It's just, I'm just throwing it out there as another possibility.
I see.
Hold on, what do you think? As the senior member here, what do you think? Which, which design would you-
That's B, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be B. I just don't like the idea of moving the door, it's all old-fashioned. I wife I'm old-
He likes the doorway over on the left, not in the middle.
When the hall time is coming, I gotta find out how I get in.
But if you had to pick, you'd pick B, right?
So, the fire doors, you would say that you didn't like the-
It makes, it looks like, it looks like an add-on.
Right, it's just awkward.
I don't want an add-on.
I understand the sentimental value of it, but this building will be here for another 100 years, and I agree that the aesthetics should be pleasing where we're trying to really improve downtown, and with the new Brad Street project coming to the streetscape and what that design is, I think I'm leaning, you know, definitely, I mean, I'm a B, so.
Design A would also limit the layout in front, because if you look at the three designs that they proposed, with the exception of design A, the other two designs put shrubbery in front of those doors and only, again-
That's a good point.
I mean, I don't want to disagree with you strictly here, but we really have a lot of flexibility in what we can do with the plaza design. I wouldn't tie any of these particular elevations to the plaza designs.
Why does, why does design A have to not have the-
Do you want to go to the plaza designs? Is that where you want to go? So, you have some feedback and you want us to go to the plaza?
Well, why, yeah, I guess, why does, yeah, if we could, why, I honestly don't know why design A would have to not have that same landscaping because of the doors.
What you're saying is you could still put it in front of what the-
Right, in front of the doors.
The doors, yeah. The only thing that I think a little bit about that, and I, I can see why you're, you like that, I really can see that, but to me, it almost looks like when they sell a fire station and a restaurant takes it over.
Yeah.
That's how it, it looks to me. I, again, I could be convinced otherwise, but at first glance-
Andrew, there's no plans to open a restaurant.
Not at the moment.
It's possible. Cafe.
May I just say one thing, though it's kind of a little bit off-message, but we have an antique safe that was part of this building, and we have been struggling to find a place in this existing structure. It is now in the lower level, just sort of tucked in an alcove. We really would like to find a space for this really interesting piece of town history.
Right under our windows.
So, please work it into the design, because we struggled terribly to find a space for it, and still struggling, so. It's, yeah, we tucked it in, it fits perfectly in this area.
Duly noted and heavy.
Thank you, yeah, very heavy. You can see it when you leave.
No, I don't leave.
We just go straight down the stairs and you'll see it.
For the sake of moving the conversation along, this, what is on the screen now represents what exists today. So, again, in addition to this photo, which is obviously the photo of what exists today, please note, because it's going to come up, please note how the tree does a pretty effective job of altering the view of the building.
It's coming down, it's half-dead, isn't it?
Okay, so, that's a good segue. So, excellent.
Presentation over.
So, this is the existing layout, so I'll roll to the first one, and Chris is going to speak, please.
I just want to make two quick, existing photograph, if you don't mind.
Photograph, got it.
I just want to note that the existing topography, the level of land changes about four feet from the fire station side over to the senior center walk. It also changes about two feet in the upward direction from the street to the, to the entrance, whether you're at the old Town Hall entrance, the present one, or the new one. And so, we're dealing with those elevation changes in a way that you can get to the new entry without having to use stairs or a ramp, we're doing with all slope walkways, which meet with code. But we do have to have some structures to retain it along the street to create a street edge, because we're not going to slope the whole thing up. So, option A is looking at expanding an area in front of the new entry, still creating an outside seated gathering space. It is creating some greenery along the street, is incorporating new materials in front of the Town Hall building. Presently, there is asphalt at the fire station, and then there's brick in front of the asphalt before you get to the street, and then when you get to the Town Hall, it changes to a concrete pavement, and then it returns back to brick once you get to the senior center. So, our proposal is to unify the materials along Main Street with an entire brick walkway, and then once beyond the brick walkway, you go into a concrete paved plaza. The notion is to have a series of seating areas, some that face Main Street, and some that sort of face a gathering area near the entry. This scheme is also showing a larger area over by the existing flagpole, which is presently to the left of the Town Hall entrance, because we understand that there are gatherings there for veterans during various times of the year. We are also proposing to reuse and relocate the arched granite curbing and posts that are either side of the Town Hall entrance. We're just spreading them out, so now they encompass the entire width of the, of the Town Hall Plaza. There are two memorial benches in the Town Hall walkway along the street. We're retaining both of those, and we're using them to flank the either side of the Town Hall, and we're proposing some street lighting. The, so that's option A. Option B is actually expanding the area within the town at the entry a little larger. We're moving the flagpole to that area, so now we have a sort of a focus gathering space in front of Town Hall. The flag becomes a very present element right outside of the entry. We're reusing the existing lanterns that are there near the side of the new entry, and we're bringing the planting levels much lower, so the beds of planting you see from the street to the plaza and in front of the building would be more annual plantings, more colorful plantings opposed to shrubbery and, and green ground cover. Still, we're retaining the memorial benches, and we are reusing the curved granite elements from the main, from existing Town Hall entrance. There is some seating in this as well, but the main plaza in front of the entry would really be more of a gathering space and one in which the flagpole is, is an integral part of it. Next scheme, this is a more of a linear approach to the design, where you're creating a sort of interior walkway, sort of an extension of the building, so that the entire paved area becomes the width of the entire Town Hall. You have seating within, between the building and the plaza, and you also have seating at the street level, some facing the street and some looking inward towards the Town Hall. You have a little more stone retaining areas around the seating to make up for the grade, because we do have a stepped entrance right in line with the new entrance, but on either side, we have those slope walkways that go up to the Town Hall. Again, we're retaining all the memorial features. We did not use the arched granite forms for this scheme. It's much more rectilinear, and it has shrubbery opposed to annual plantings, but those are all pieces you can pick and choose. It's just trying to introduce, we're trying to introduce in all of these sort of a harder street edge, so you know where the sidewalk is, you know where the plaza is, so you would feel comfortable on a nice afternoon, sitting in the plaza and meeting someone there. It becomes more of a meeting place in town.
Anyone you'd like me to focus on as you begin?
I have one small question. I see where the flagpole is. Who's going to be in- I see where the flagpole is. Who's going to be in charge of the flagpole when the fire bubble leaves?
Ray.
It's just an obvious, you know.
I do like the one where you incorporated the, the granite.
I do too. I like A.
I think, is that, is that A?
We did A and B.
A and B. And I, to me, it's also, I'm a little bit of a stickler of things that should look to period and look, the last one seemed a little contemporary.
Yeah, I didn't like that.
To me. So which one would you say, again, I'm no landscape architect, which one do you think would blend in more with the building and the architecture of Main Street out of these other two?
We presented them all because we think they all would work.
Yeah, okay.
But when it comes down to it, when it comes down to its preference. So we didn't tell you which option on the facades we liked, but also not going to tell you.
And you're not going to do that. I get you.
The plaza.
I like A and B. The only thing with B that I, that is concerning is the annual plantings. I'd, I'd like to see more greenery.
I agree with you.
The maintenance of annual, that's my concern, yeah.
So that would be, so you're leaning more towards A. That's sort of how I.
I like the A. It's attractive. I like B as well. It's the, I just don't like the annual plantings. I prefer more greenery.
One of the things I'd like you to consider is the placement of the flagpole. I think we spent a lot of time with town manager and others talking about that in relationship to where it currently sits and in relationship to the front entry and how potentially moving it to a middle zone might actually enhance its presence on the site and be able to be a little bit more utilized. Where it's an A, where it's off to the side, it kind of feels like an afterthought. Right now, it happens to be close to the front entry because that's where the front entry is.
But you, but you could move the flagpole.
That's what we're suggesting in B, that we would, we could move it.
I like the flag closer to the front door as well.
I, I do as well.
I actually like B. I like the, the larger gathering area.
Yeah, I like B too.
I think we have ceremonies out there and I think it's nice to have an area where everyone can be off the sidewalk and into one, one place where we can, you know, have the various observances that we have there, so.
My only disagreement with B is the annual plantings. I prefer greenery and that's easy enough.
Yeah, there's really two differences. It's the, the trees. There's trees in option A, which, you know, there are trees there now, but.
It doesn't have to be a tree. It can be a shrub.
New trees and, and they would be, try to be tighter and smaller, more, more streetscape trees. And in option, and option B, the plaza area in front of the door is bigger and there's low-scale planting, so no trees. That's really the main differences.
It softens the streetscape as well.
It does. It does.
I would probably, because of that, now that you've pointed that out, I do like the flagpole move, but I would probably lean more towards the trees. We don't have hardly any trees downtown.
Can we talk a little bit about the trees and the context of the, because I think one of the things, it seems there's a general recommendation toward B with some changes, meaning with more perennials rather than annuals.
You're talking building, not?
No, I'm talking, this, but you want some changes to this. If you work, is, is it one of the things that if the board wants to introduce trees and it makes some sense, is, is to try to move the trees though away from being the dominant?
Yes, absolutely.
Picture as it appears here and, and maybe as a discussion of trees and just working off B.
I don't care about.
Further, further route in the green areas? So further to either side of the building as opposed to dead center in the building? If, if we're creating a courtyard for ceremonies and events, which I think is great, then adding trees makes sense, but may make more sense on the edges of the buildings rather than closer to the center.
I agree. I think the, the pop of color that may be needed seasonally can be done with large, large pots and, you know what I mean? You can, you can, the upkeep is just my concern.
See where the, the corners, the green area, I would not be opposed to trees being there because it, it kind of compromises what we're all saying.
Yep.
Don't forget too, it's also nice to have a little shade when you're sitting and going, you know.
Very true.
So if, I hear what you're saying about that if they're dead center and especially if one of the trees becomes diseased and you've got one doing well and one, it's, it's really, it's tough. So if you went to B and moved the, moved the trees like on those little, they almost look like cornices. Yeah.
Yeah. I was saying the same thing, but then you'd also want, it sounds like there's a general interest to want to reduce the amount of color, put in perennials of some sort, small shrubs, green, and then we could accent this courtyard with large pots with color.
Yeah.
So we could, we could manage that easier by filling in this courtyard with, during the season.
And, and, you know, you can pick shrubberies that offer color too, seasonal color.
Sure can, yeah.
It's looking good. No, it's really looking good.
Thank you for your comments.
Excited.
We have no opinion here, as you.
I'm waiting for Phil to weigh in.
We're just, providing some feedback, which I think you've been.
So the next steps would be they'd go, take the feedback and, and make some changes and then conduct or have a public meeting in the next couple of weeks and take that feedback and bring it back to you with these, you know, amended concepts.
Great.
At that meeting, you'd look for some specific direction. So after town meeting, we can begin with design, complete the design development process and bid packets who are ready to go in the fall. So they'll be coming back with.
It's exciting.
Some additional feedback and some additional concepts.
Fantastic.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I know we're running a little long. We've got a lot on the agenda tonight, so we're going to have Eric Forey come up, our director of planning and economic development, and talk about some storefront improvements and the possible farmer's market. Interesting.
For allowing some time for tonight's busy agenda, I'll try and be quick. It's, I think it's nice to follow the discussion we just have, had. The expansion project will certainly have a huge impact on the downtown and I think what I'm talking about tonight, hopefully will as well. I'm just here tonight to introduce two potential programs that we believe can help enhance the downtown district, specifically a farmer's market and the creation of a Main Street facade or storefront improvement project, program. I certainly don't intend to get in any great details. I want to stress that we're really in the preliminary stages of gathering information and looking at successful programs out there as examples. Instead, the presentation is really just looking to get your feedback and guidance and whether or not we should pursue this and if so, we will do that and then come back to you with a recommendations that define and set the process to get these programs going. Obviously, the downtown, or the town itself has looked for ways historically to create a vibrant downtown, one that fully caters to residents, but also sustains activity, I think, after five o'clock on a weekday so that we also have life on weekends. We've had past studies and a recent survey. Past studies, you know, we talked about items such as creating gateways, enhancing use, different uses, signage, lighting, parking, and just certainly building architecture. A good example for us is the downtown overlay that was passed, I believe in '09 and design guidelines that were established there. Last month, we had a survey of what we thought was our elder, senior population and our youth population and we focused questions on determining what people like about downtown or not and services they'd like to see brought and amenities they'd like to see brought into downtown. We had over 500 responses. Those surveys are online. Thinking about now as we talk about it, maybe keeping the survey up on Survey Monkey and keep getting responses if we can do that. But certainly the responses underscored the strong feelings that the community's had for a long time, that the downtown's a place to go for running errands, you know, interaction with local government, post office, banking, and just making quick purchases. But it's not a place where we congregate or go for any sustained period of time. And also, we had some feedback that the atmosphere is basically in need of improvement. These findings make it clear we need to bring in uses that will change and stimulate our local economy and I think the feedback I've been getting some from our merchants certainly underscores that, particularly downtown merchants who feel that perhaps we could be giving them a little more attention and help. Part of this effort will bring, you know, high-end restaurants, things like that. That's one of the uses, but also cultural events, festivals and other activities. So with that in mind, the survey gave a clear winner as to what residents would like to see. Has over 80%, almost 85% shows they could choose multiple, but farmer's market had 85% response. We've been considering a farmer's market, but certainly that, that is pushing us, prompting us to do so even faster. I don't know if we can get anything in, in place for this summer or fall. What I'm learning about it, certainly like to, but we'd like to aggressively get a plan together so that a minimum, everything will be in order for next year, if not part of this year. What we've learned so far is that these markets really involve more than just local produce. They involve arts, crafts, baked goods, other food products. In many cases, towns have live entertainment. They really become social events. They are usually run by a local nonprofit, not by the municipality. And proceeds would go to charitable functions. I, we have some ideas on, on that and I'll get to that maybe in a second. And most of these markets are located in the municipalities downtown. Our next steps would be to reach out to the downtown merchants, get their input, hopefully support, and then identify a partner, potentially the North Andover Merchants' Association or perhaps a festival committee. I, I think they're presenting a little later. They might be interested. Actually, they have online already vendor forms and things like that and for food and things we can piggyback on. And maybe we use an alternate partnership with various local profits. So one week, some kind of youth program gets it, one week, whatever, and I don't know. Those are things to consider. The other thing is trying to identify a day and time. There are some local markets. Andover has one, Methuen, Lawrence has two locations, Haverhill, Rowley, Ipswich. Most seem to be the Wednesday night or Saturday. Andover, as I understand, is pretty successful. For instance, you know, so we have to figure out, are we competing with them? Is there room for competition? And what would also, again, with the goal in mind is bringing vibrancy to the downtown on, you know, after hours or certainly on the weekend. So that's one thing that we'll be looking at. Also, locations. I know in the past, there's been some movement to try and get a farmer's market and where would you put it? Have not talked to anyone at the, for the seniors market, the owners there. I've been told there's some indication that they'd be willing, maybe not. Broached the idea with the town manager, maybe we can shut down a section of a street or even first street just apart to set these up, but anything where it works. But I think it's critical we have it downtown if we can. The last thing is just the rate structure and the permitting and all that. We'll get that in place. So on that, I'll, I'll stop. I don't know if anyone has any questions about farmer's markets, but.
I think it's a great idea. And I know that the Fall Festival, which the Merchants' Association throws every fall, the genesis of that was actually a conversation about how we start a farmer's market. And it was a conversation that began, none of this, it was probably later in the season and we learned very quickly that it was something that would be a heavy lift for us. I mean, we were much younger as an organization at that point, but there was a strong interest among our downtown merchants. I mean, a strong interest. But the reality is they were business owners and were a volunteer organization and it just, there wasn't the time, but the compromise was the, the one-day event in September, but.
Which has grown year, you know, since it's begun. It's, it's grown by leaps and bounds. And we, we've looked at, I mean, Newbury Port is very successful. We've reached out to some of the other communities directly, how they did it. But as Phil said, when we brought, when we were really looking at this with Kurt Pryor and with, and with the Merchants' Association, it's a very heavy lift.
Which means it would be great to have the town as a partner.
So the town would, when we initially looked, I mean, you know, but what does that mean? What does that mean the town would be a partner?
Eric, have you, so this is, you said this was preliminary and you prefaced your discussion with that. Have you reached out or thought of reaching out to any of our local farmers to see if they could help? Like I, just, like Michael Smolak, for instance, had mentioned that he'd be willing to connect us with his contact who runs the Haverhill Farmer's Market. I mean.
I mean, and it's also something that I'm, I'm wondering if we, we, you know, keep the door open, although we, you know, of course, a nonprofit is the best way to go, in my opinion. However, again, we've looked at this a number of times. To have volunteers do it has always been the problem.
I think the other thing we found out too was that farmers commit themselves very early.
Very fine events.
Years in advance to farmer markets. So if you don't get with these farmers early on, they've already committed out for the season.
Right.
Fairly quickly.
I'm here for helping you. I, we just, we just doused a lot of, we threw a lot of water on this idea, but it's, it's a great idea. Just, yeah, it's something that, that does take a lot of, a lot of planning in advance, unfortunately.
I'd be happy to even see, you know, this year even, even, even testing, you know, just a couple of times.
Park stay or something.
Yeah, just, just a few times. I, I'd be interested in, in testing the water. But again, I'm going to go back to who's doing all the lifting? Because it's, I, that was the, the roadblock that we continually hit.
You know, like Boxer does relatively early September, maybe the second week, they do the Apple Festival and things like that where it's right down, right on the main street, they close the road and I almost, I agree, maybe it should be a one-day test just to see. Right at their harvest time. And of course, you have to hope for great weather. That's the other problem.
We did talk about that with, with Judy Timman. Again, this was several years ago when she had mentioned that even that can be tough to organize because farmers want, want the consistency. They want, they, it's difficult to get them to commit to just one day out of an entire year because they want to be able to go back again and again and have their customer base. It is a great idea and even as far as consumers go, I mean, I think back to when Star Market was downtown and even though apparently there wasn't the base of business to support them. I mean, you think about how many elderly complexes there are down there and to have something that they can walk to and take advantage of fresh produce. I mean, that's really great. So I like this idea. I'm glad that you're pursuing it.
So I actually have a name that I'll hook up with you later on, on someone who's local that is involved with farmer's markets quite a bit.
Great.
So I'll give you his name later.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the second one. While we know that the critical need for transforming downtown is to expand on specific uses, it's also apparent we need to change the look, the visual style of the downtown district. Again, I think the renovations here, the expansion there will go a long way in doing that. The Brad Street project as well. Today, obviously, we have no consistent style. We have buildings that are one or two-story, not traditional downtown structures. We have single-family, multifamily, tenement, strip mall, mill complex. It's just kind of, not only that, we have different building materials, brick, wood, vinyl siding, clapboard, you name it. It's different roofs, everything. But again, we've, to address this, we've had some design guidelines that were put in place as part of the overlay program that, and to help control the aesthetics of the area's development. What we want to accomplish is a more consistent theme to storefronts. One, you know, we don't want to have uniformity, but we, we certainly want an authentic feel and this program, we think, will help with that. What we are thinking is, as an initial focus, is just Main Street and maybe not, certainly not all of Main Street, right, but maybe from Sutton to, to Water Street. It's just to start it off, but you know, certainly again, we're in preliminary stages. We think this will encourage, I'm sorry.
What do you mean by a program? So is there funding available? Is there, is there grants available?
Well, I think, we'll get to that. Funding, no. A lot of communities have CDBG, Community Development Block grant monies, but they're entitlement communities. I will say, there are a lot of communities out there that aren't across the nation. Certainly Massachusetts, you have, you know, Newton, Woburn, Beverly, Cambridge, Plymouth, Framingham, Springfield's entitlement, I'm sure, but that have some programs and they put funds into this. One thing we are considering, and I know this one requires a lot more thought, is maybe the profit or the proceeds from the sale of Brad Street to reinvest that into the downtown portions of that, those monies. But certainly that's something, if, if this is worthwhile pursuing, to work with the town manager.
Can I provide some context? So let's provide some context. So, so there are programs, so. So there are programs, so the initiative would look something like this, we can provide you more detail later. The initiative would be that we would work with local business owners along Main Street, provide them an opportunity, if they have an interest, to say, listen, we could see the benefit from some storefront improvements. We would, we would have an architect have sort of a look for Main Street, run it by this board, get some feedback from the community of what we think it would look like, and then be able to offer to businesses financial assistance to improve the storefronts of their buildings to adopt this vision. So we create a vision for Main Street and we provide them an opportunity to tap into design services, so it may not be something that they have to do on their own. And then we provide them with funding support. They would have to match, and again, we can give you some specifics. It's not uncommon in a number of communities, Wakefield being a good example, where they've said to businesses, okay, we know that you'd like to improve your storefront, we think this is the look that would make sense, we can provide the resources, being an architect, and we can provide some financial assistance in the form of, say, a loan. And in turn, with that, they would agree to make the improvements in the storefront.
The only problem I see that is the majority of our business owners downtown don't own the buildings that they're in.
Right, and so it would be linked to the landlords, so it's an opportunity for the landlords. There are provisions, and again, we can give you more detail, this is meant to be sort of a thirty-thousand-foot view. It would require that the landlord, in this case, the landlord, of course, would have to occupy or own the, excuse me, own the building for a period of time. If they didn't, there'd be a reimbursement process. So there is a binding relationship between the town and who owns the building. But it would afford, it adds value to the landlord in the long term because their storefront gets improved, it provides a look to Main Street. You know, we're trying to craft a look by creating an overlay district, and what's happening to a certain extent is it's still one-off, you know, it's one building at a time.
Even that overlay district, I worked on with that, with Kurt in, I think it was 2009. And, you know, we made some great changes, I think, but I think certainly not enough. There's a long way to go.
Well, the overlay district really is about the nature and use of the zoning, not an architect.
Right, of the zoning. We thought that would be helpful.
Right.
It just, I don't, it hasn't done much, is my point.
So one of the feedback items that Eric has identified is, we get a lot back from residents, is part of the limitations to Main Street is people, doesn't have necessarily a feel. It's not a criticism. Folks come downtown and they see some of the work done as an example where Heavenly Donuts is, which we've got a lot of positive feedback. And then we have some, you know, street residential. And then we have some cases where there's mixed use. We have some case of in 1910 construction, some case of 1940 construction. The storefronts are just different, there's not a uniformity. So the idea, again, and we can provide you with more detail, would get, we're just trying to get some feedback around the idea where we would, we feel like we need to partner with those businesses, saying to them, geez, we want Main Street to be different, and then stepping back and waiting for that to happen seems not to be the strategic partnership necessary to make things happen. We need to step into the game and say we have an interest, and that can be streetscape improvements or partnering in this kind of investment. But I think the experience is it's not going to be enough to hope for change on Main Street and not partner with the folks who live, work, and do business down here in some way. And that could be infrastructure improvements, which you've talked about, but it also could be in this way, partnering in terms of storefront improvements and providing some financial support.
I definitely support the concept, and I think that, I think with, you know, with Brad Street and what will be happening in that particular area, what we've done in Machine Shop Village and what we'll be continuing to have, the new gateway signage into downtown, what's happened at Heavenly and at the liquor store and along there. So I completely support the concept and I look forward to more detail as we go. And I, you know, in a way to find funds to help, you know, we have, some great things have already happened on their own dime, right across the street, the pizza shop, I mean, it looks fantastic, you know? So if we can continue to help some of our building and business owners, you know, it's great, I love it.
So where are the next steps? I'm sorry.
We did do this years ago. We brought, we did get some money, we got, brought people in, we met with all the merchants and made suggestions on, on streetscape improvements and colors and, and a lot of glass and lighting and signage, and everybody was, this is great, we don't have the money.
Right, it was all about the money.
So we, we've started down this path and we get so far, and then, as Andrew said and the rest of us have said, it just sort of falls flat. But if there is some funding source...
So here's a suggestion that is, I'll throw out, but not, not for, well, in a response today, but not certainly for action today. We received $300,000 for the sale of the Brad Street School, not unlike the way we do other things. There are some limits in how you can reinvest that. But that is not only going to improve that site, hopefully, but those are dollars which I believe could be reinvested into a sinking fund or a revolving fund for this kind of benefit. So we reinvest what a developer has paid the town to change the Brad Street site, and we place all or part of it into a sinking fund or a revolving fund where that could be tapped into to reinvest in these storefronts. Again, linked to the idea that you'd have to own the building for a length of time or have to stay in the tenancy, so you'd get it back. But in turn, at five, 10, or $15,000, which we've generally seen in these kinds of grants, provides financial support for businesses to improve the streetscapes, use dollars which came to the town as a function of, it's one-time money, so you'd really not, you know, it's not going to go to a traditional budget response. And use those dollars that we receive for the Brad Street to reinvest in the Main Street and some providing the financial assistance that was linked to a program. So we create a vision, we partner with businesses, we provide funding, and we do so not, by not tapping into an operating budget, but into a revenue source that we receive for improving the Brad Street.
And I think the time is now, insofar as what's happening, I mean, you know, down at the Mills, you have Congress and all that leaving, however, I think it's an exciting time at the Mills, in all honesty. I think there's, there's, there's a lot of good stuff happening down there, and I think it's a very exciting time. I think the fact that we're going to be bringing the employees who are out at Oscar Landing back downtown, Brad Street, the new, you know, there'll be new residential as well. I think that it's, it's primetime to be doing this. I mean, a perfect example, too, for short dollars is the difference of what Chris did at J&amp;W. Very short dollars with paint and flower boxes and...
And eyes on Main?
Right, and eyes on Main, you know, and they've, they've made impact statements on that end of the street for really short dollars. So again, I completely support the concept, happy to help in any way I can, and rah rah, yay.
Eric, in the interest of time, because we have a really lot left on the agenda here, we're not even out of communications and announcements yet. What is our next steps and when can we expect you back on an, for the update and maybe some more details on this program?
The next step is really defining, I think, a critical step that Andrew's identified is us establishing the vision, and I think we have to figure out how to, you know, how the cost of doing that. And, and then just, it shouldn't take too long to get the specifics of what the program should be. I mean, they're pretty, there's a lot of consistencies, you know, it's usually a one-on-one match, and there's some limits, you know, there's a minimum, there's limits, and very easily defined uses, you know, how you can apply the money, how you can't apply the money. I don't think it'll take too long with that.
I think we can provide you within two weeks a draft of what a program would look like.
Great.
And then we can get your feedback and have Eric come back, say, in two meetings, so you can provide response to that draft.
Awesome.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. All right, so we have some spring cleanup events coming up.
The memo is obviously in your package. Bruce, Thibodeau, DBW Director, issued a robocall to residents regarding the provisions of this, so this is really, again, a communication item that's been placed on the town website as well, or access to the information, and we've sent the robocall to residents.
Thank you. Most important, well, there is a, this weekend, there's the hazardous waste collection on the eighteenth, so. Okay, this is the longest communications announcements we've ever had.
I think it is.
Any, are there any other communications or announcements before we move on?
The commuter bus has begun and we're exploring some modifications to it, which would be very exciting, but I can't reveal them at this time.
How's the ridership going?
It's been okay. It's been, you know, not quite what we thought, quite frankly, but we think that part of it is we need to continue to communicate it. To a certain extent, we did a lot of aggressive communication up front, but we need to continue to communicate that and get out in front of those people. We know that there are people taking the commute, the ride's great, we just need to be, we need to get out front and communicate a little more effectively.
Time is leaving in the morning?
Six forty-five currently. Yes.
That's the one.
I did do the ride, it was fantastic. I'm telling you, it was fantastic. They drop you off at key places throughout Boston, whether you're going into, you know, Government Center, near the State House, the Transportation Building, Copley Square, or the Financial District. It was fantastic.
Sweet.
An hour and five minutes. It might have been a slow day. That's not bad. Have you taken the...
I haven't commuted in a long time, that just seems like.
It was a really nice bus, the parking is free, it was really fantastic. And now that they're going to be working on the, on the train, some Thai work, that we really should key into getting those people to take the bus instead.
The tough thing, and I expressed this to Andrew, is that for a commuter who's going into work, if you're going in for the 8:00 AM start, you're cutting it really close, and if you're going in for the 9:00 AM start, you're really late. So that would probably explain why, with the survey, six forty-five was the second choice for everybody, because, you know, otherwise it would have been incredibly late.
I've heard a lot of Congress folks say that, they can't take the bus.
So I actually, I'm taking it Friday, but I told my boss to expect me to be fifteen minutes late, just in case, only because I start at eight, and I think, if I remember right, you said my stop would be exactly at eight o'clock.
It was tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got feedback on both sides.
Let's hope there's no accidents.
So wait for a report when you get back.
Yes.
Maybe give us a report on that.
So we'll continue to modify the service, and again, there are some, some other modifications which we think are enhancements that we'll fill you in later about.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. First on the list is a donation from the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center for Fourth of July fireworks displays.
Move that the Board of Selectmen, oh, are they here?
Is there someone here to present that? I know the festival committee's here to receive it, but there's no one here to present it.
Then we'll move...
But thank you for hanging in with us. Usually, we don't like to let donations and these type of things go as long as we have, but we had a lot of items, but go ahead.
Move that the Board of Selectmen accept the donation of the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center in the amount of $5,000 for the Fourth of July fireworks display. Awesome.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second request for fee waivers. The festival committee is requesting a waiver for the fees for the use of, for all fees for the Sheep Sharing Festival on May seventeenth.
I would recommend second.
Yeah, okay. So let's, did you want to, Jeff, did you want to say something?
Well, if you have any questions, since Hillary's alone standing here. We've all been, it's that forty-third year doing itself.
Yeah, I think we're...
I think we all know Ben there done that, but if you have any questions, I'd gladly answer.
That's my move, I said.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second on the list is...
Thank you, Ben, for all that, these are volunteers who've gone there long enough for the rest of us to have fun. So thank you, all. I know, but it's a lot of work.
Okay, next is the North Andover Blues Club Little League for their opening day parade May second, 2015, from 8:15 to 10:00 AM. So you're looking to close Main Street, right?
Yes.
Well...
Have a good night, thank you.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second. My only question is, do we have buy-in from all the businesses that, and what's the route going to be this year? Well, the route's different this year.
So we're asking it back, so last year, we said at first in Main, we're going to try to back it up to Water, in Main, and the intersection of Merrimack. And I did, I checked in with the Flower Shop, Main Street Hardware, J&amp;W Shoe Repair, and Frank's Barber Shop, that area, that's, and they all bought into it. I was, I was over there on March seventh, excuse me, March seventeenth at 9:00 AM, spoke to each one of them.
And they were all...
It moves quick.
Yeah.
It moves quick, yeah. And the reason why we're extending it back a little further, we have more participation this year, we've included the softball, girls' softball, so over this, so over 200 girls are involved, and including last year, we had the Challenger Division, so we have almost 1,000 kids possibly.
Wow.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? And again, thank you for all you guys do with the youth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Okay.
Let's hope for great... Do you have to throw pitches this year?
Yes, absolutely. Just let me know.
Oh, yeah, maybe I'll make it this year. Every year, I'm a little late, I'm like five minutes late.
They're duly noted, so.
Well, you did go early last year. You guys, Chuck, you went early last year. The pitching started a little early last year, earlier than what you told me.
Just like Tom Brady.
Oh, no, I practiced. All right, the third is Division of Public Works would like permission to waive all permit fees for street lighting upgrades on Water and High Street projects.
Excited. Move that the Board of Selectmen waive all permit fees for street lighting upgrades along Water and High.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, it's all good. That's our pattern.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next is a request from Meg Coulter to add her mother's name. Her mother was Emma McNair Kittredge, she was a doctor, and she would like to have her name added to the Kittredge Memorial out on the old center. The memorial there lists all the members of the Kittredge family that are, were doctors, and I believe there's nine generations listed on that sign right now. What did I say?
No, no, Tracy was saying...
It's on, it's on, the memorial is on the common between what is currently Cowles Rock and Ho- Ho- Dish. I guess this request came in, Meg Coulter lives out in California, she originally made this request back in eighty-six, somehow it...
Still deliberating.
It did, well, it didn't originally get on there, there was a different Dr. Kittredge that was added to the memorial at that time.
A Kittredge?
Kittredge, yeah.
Is this a Kittredge or a McNair?
The woman is a Kittredge. Her maiden name was Kittredge.
McNair?
No. No, her maiden name was Kittredge.
Her maiden name was Kittredge.
Right, she was a Kittredge.
Did she ever live in town?
Did she live here?
See, that I don't know. My recommendation is we need a little more research on this.
I agree, I agree.
This, right now, we've got all the information from, from her daughter, and she did spend, from what her daughter has told me, and it is documented in Wikipedia, she was one of the original doctors in Los Angeles Memorial Hospital, and, I mean, she is well documented and well-written.
In California.
In Califor, correct, in California.
For those at home, this is the Kittredge farm that has been, you know, within this family for years, and they still own it.
Yeah.
They have a caretaker, and as you said, it was a family of doctors, but I think we do need to kind of find out, did this wonderful lady ever live in North Andover?
Well, why is it, what is McNair?
Mr. Jimmy, can I, can I actually just ask for clarification? So you had mentioned that you thought that it had been filed back in eighty-six and then just put, you know, just never acted on?
Well, no, it was acted on. There was a different Dr. Edwina Kittredge, was actually added to the memorial in eighty-six. She was a doctor that worked out of New York. So that, I don't know what her ties to North Andover was either, but she was added to the memorial at that time.
Wait, because that's how I read the agenda, that it was just to show an example of, of what happened the last time a name was added after the original monument was put together.
Supposedly, the request was made and one was added and the other one wasn't.
But if you see in the bar, like, where would we put her?
Well, it would have to be a...
It would have to be like another one down here, okay.
And for those of you who would remember, those of you who went to the general store as a kid or went to the playground, this was the bubbler, and there was a spot on the bottom for, for the dogs, when dogs roamed free in town, but it's where kids, they go to the playground and they come to this bubbler, and so there's, there is... And so there's, there is...
I guess I want to see where she falls in the chain.
We just want to make sure it's appropriately placed. It's not just somebody by the name of Kittredge.
No, I understood. And it needs to be... I mean, I'm not advocating for one way or the other.
No, no, you didn't.
A letter to us and asked us to consider her mother to be added to that because she is a Kittredge and she was a doctor. I think there needs to be more due diligence done on our side to ensure that before we go out and add someone to a memorial, that we make sure that it's appropriate.
Agreed.
Maybe some research with the town clerk would be helpful.
Or even great... Gate Noss could, because... Family. I said family. I was reading it.
Why can't we request from the daughter to give us a little bit more info, too?
Oh, she's given us a lot of info. But we... The question is whether or not it's appropriate to add her to the memorial if she's never worked or had any...
I don't know where...
She is a Kittredge, supposedly a Kittredge that...
But we didn't... I didn't get any of that, so can I be provided to the rest of us, too?
Yeah, I got it. But it could be, though, that she maybe didn't live in North End, but she is... They're property owners. You know, the Kittredge family still owns it, but I don't know. We have to find out.
I know, yeah. That's why I'm saying there's more due diligence. There's a letter that came in.
Yeah.
So this is where, in the... This is where the '86 edition was made. See, she was out of Yonkers, New York. And then she's requesting that her mother be added to this memorial. That's all. So I would say we table this one until we can get some more information regarding the request and the person and what the what the guidelines are for adding to this memorial, because we haven't really been able to find anybody that knows that, really. Maybe Charlie Salisbury, because I believe he was involved with adding the last one.
He was involved with the last one.
Yeah. And he's been in Florida. So...
Yeah.
So I guess for this one, I'll hear a motion to table it.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll table this one so we can do some further diligence on it. Okay, next item is an amendment to the financial reserve policy. Mr. Manager?
Now, Mr. Chairman, there were two amended amendments to the financial reserve policy. You may recall, last year, the Board of Selectmen on February 10th and the Finance Committee on February 5th adopted a newly-written set of financial reserve policies, last written in 1996. Pretty comprehensive changes approved by both bodies. The two changes this year focus on two things. One is a recommendation that we establish a stabilization fund for the benefit of special education costs, something that was introduced first at the Financial Forecast Meeting back in November, and has been discussed several times at Finance Committee meetings and Boards of Selectmen meetings and School Committee meetings. So the concept is to provide $750,000, which would be accessible when unforeseen costs arose associated with special education expenditures, and that there would be some rules which govern the use of those particular funds. So what you have in these particular financial reserve policies is a recommended amendment to add a reserve policy which outlines the method by which dollars would be made available to the School Department from this Special Education Reserve Fund. The second change was checking clarification or amendment to these bylaws was introduction of a language for the OPEP, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust, language. There's a funding request this year to move money to the Other Post-Employment Benefit or OPEP Trust. And the language, we needed to add one or two sentences and amend a few words to make sure the financial reserve policies could consider that request. So I don't know if you have any specific questions. The document's been before the Finance Committee now for... They've had the document for a couple of weeks. They do devote it at their meeting tomorrow night on Wednesday. I spent some time, a couple hours with them on a number of issues last week, and this was the issues. They were, seemed in support of the drafted language relative to the OPEP stable... Excuse me, the Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Okay. Do you need a vote on that?
We do to change the policy.
We do need to vote to change the policy, yeah.
So we need a motion if everyone would so desire. Anyone so desire?
Yeah. Move that the Board of Selectmen... Oh, I don't know where it is. So moved. There's not, it's not in, like... Well, usually you have it written a certain way.
Motion to accept the amended language to the...
Motion to accept the amended language to the OPED Trust Fund.
To the financial reserve policy.
To the financial reserve policy.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the amended language. We have a second. Further discussion on this?
No.
Any questions? Phil, you got something?
Well, I just, I remember the last time that you spoke about this, Andrew. How many other communities have done this? Because I thought it was a brilliant suggestion when you made it several weeks ago, and I just, I've tried to get an idea of how many Massachusetts communities have taken this step.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any community that has taken the step. There is one community that looked to introduce it in terms of special legislation, or it wasn't exactly the same, but the concept was similar. I'm not sure that it proceeded, you know, any further than that, but I think we're blazing a little bit of trail, but I think in a positive way. I should note because...
Absolutely, a positive way.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
The seven... I think for the public, it was helpful relative to the reserve. The reason for a reserve policy is that when it gets introduced at town meeting, I'm sure the natural reaction would be, well, what we've really done is make available another $750,000 that could be added to the bottom line of the budget of the School Department. And that's really not the intent of this particular stabilization fund. And I can tell you, the School Committee and the School Administration and this board and others and Finance Committee have recognized that it really is a partnership. It will require the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee to all to agree that an unforeseen circumstance arose. But what happens today when that occurs is the School Department needs to amend their budget to accommodate the additional costs associated often with out-of-district placements. And it means that often they must reduce staff in the middle of the year or affect the education we deliver in the middle of the year. And quite frankly, when we approve a budget, we are raising the level of expectation of what the education service level will be. And there are just some times when unforeseen conditions arise that force us to impact that. And I think this gives us a landing area so we can transition over a year or two to make sure that we're not impacting the services we deliver regarding education in the middle of the year.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have unanimous vote. Okay. 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. So we need to reopen that warrant at this point. I'll hear a motion to reopen the warrant.
No. Second.
All those... Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the warrant is now open. Are we opening it just to accept it at this point, or we... With the modifications of the citizen's petitions?
Well, you can make any additional modifications yourself.
Okay. Any... All right. So I, we need a motion to accept the warrant then at this point, unless there are any questions or concerns that we want to change the warrant around the numbering of the articles or the ordering of the articles, anything?
The only question that I have is a little bit about this. The, and I'm not sure where the placement is, but is the placement of the vote for the younger voters. I'm concerned it being at the very end of the meeting.
Yeah.
That we will not have a lot of people there. And I think it's an important issue that we should have a full audience for. You know, I understand that some people would say, well, it's good for people to go through the whole town meeting process and listen and learn, but my fear is, as we've all seen, where you have one article that brings everybody in and then they're all out the door, and then there's a few of us making the decision.
Let me speak to that, because I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. It was my intention as the chair to put those at the end, because in the past, what we've seen is when the citizens' petitions were completed, that's when we saw the majority of the people leave the meeting, because there really was, there was an interest in the citizens' petition, and then the very next article being the budget, and the majority of the people left. So my thought was to move the citizens' petitions out to the, further along in the meeting so that we would have a greater participation, because that's usually what holds people to the meeting, is those citizens' petitions. And I thought that would be one way of trying to keep interest in the meeting. And also, you know, let's give, if the 16, 17, 18-year-olds want to have the vote, let's have them see what they're going to be voting on. And go through the financial process and go through what it is they would be, you know, looking to vote for.
If they, but if they do come and sit through the entire meeting, I don't know.
It's irrelevant anyways, because they can't vote on it right now. So...
No, no, but the 18-year-olds can.
If that makes sense. So then, move that the Board of Selectmen accept the 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant as presented.
A motion and a second?
Second.
All those... Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll leave the body to decide whether or not they're going to... But I'll support it.
That's always a prerogative of the town meeting. Okay, I'll hear a motion to close the warrant.
Move that the Board of Selectmen close the 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the warrant is now closed. We can always reopen it, but it is at this point closed. Second, next item, we are going to go through the board's recommendations on the citizens' petitions and the financial articles, and vote them up or down with respect to how the board so chooses. So how do we want to do this? In the past, we've taken multiple articles at a time.
How many do we have?
Can I just plug in?
Okay.
Is the chair of preference, or shall we just begin?
Okay. So I do have a suggestion that we maybe take something slightly out of order so we can get through licensing at this point. And then we can vote the articles at the tail end of the meeting. So I'd like to move into licensing.
Excellent.
Okay. Have a motion to move the licensing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are now in licensing.
We are now in licensing. First on our agenda this evening is Cynthia Robinson. The Green Apple Cafe, please come on up. Tell us a little bit about what you'll be doing there. We're very excited.
You're very excited. I'm going to be having a breakfast and lunch place, restaurant, with cafe connected, so full breakfast and lunch and a cafe.
Fantastic.
Kind of revitalizing that building of 42 years.
That's great. Did you purchase the building?
I'm in the process.
Excellent, excellent. The old style pizza. Everything is in order except...
I'm working on it.
Okay.
What is...
The fire suppression system still, through the fire department, is still an issue. So it has to be brought up, reconditioned, right? Well, yes. Well, we can, we will be able to approve your common picture that was licensed tonight with the condition of this.
That's fine. Yes.
You're going to be open from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so just breakfast and lunch.
Right.
And you're not looking for a entertainment license... Thank you, it's getting late, sorry.
No, not at this point.
So no piped-in music, nothing?
Right.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions, or...
You can come back for that.
You can always come back for that.
Okay, either that or you could just...
No TVs. You need it for TV, too.
If I decided to do it right now?
Well, no, you'd have to redo your...
You have to refill. You can come back.
But I just wanted it on your radar.
And the question about outdoor seating, too, while we're...
There's currently outdoor seating there in the front.
They came to bring it.
I wonder, is that transferable to a new home?
But I don't know if it's transferable. I'm not sure.
We'll double-check the building design.
Okay. They told me to ask about that.
Four or five out there right now. So we can double-check, and you can follow up with a town manager or assistant town manager in regards to that, or Ms. Burrows, Mrs. Burrows, love.
And you might want to do them both at the same time, because again, it could just be background music.
Right. Background music, television.
Right.
You need to have that license for it.
Okay.
Okay. When is your ETA?
In June.
In June? Great. Okay.
Locally.
It's really exciting. It's very exciting.
There used to be a great little restaurant place just down the road from where you are that's great for breakfast and lunch.
I know. Excited. Great. Super. Can I have a motion then in regards, it does need the caveat of...
Motion approved.
With the contingency...
With the contingent, right.
Of the fire suppression system being installed.
Right. I have that coming in place.
A quick question. The guy's been running with that system intact.
They've been closed for a long time. It could have...
It's new regulations.
It's just now that I'm having it tested, so that's in the works.
Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fantastic. And don't forget to join the North End of a Merchants Association.
Oh, I sure will. Thank you.
Fantastic. You're welcome. Good luck.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
So there's seven Merrimack requests. I see some Merrimack folks in the room.
Yeah.
Yeah. Poor guys. You can take them all at once? Everything is in order?
Move approval.
For April 19th, May 15th, May 16th, May 16th, May 17th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All set.
You guys stayed all night, but you're all set.
Sorry about that, but thank you. Everything is in order, as usual. And you're ahead of the game. Much appreciated.
Big time's coming up with the graduation. My daughter's graduating this year, so I'll be at all these events.
Fine. Can I have a motion to move out of licensing?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are out of licensing.
Okay, we'll go back to taking out of order, what we took out of order previously, and go back through the articles, the financial and the citizens' petition articles. And I think, Rosemary, you were going to make a recommendation on whether we wanted to take those.
Whatever your preference is.
You want to elaborate on that?
We could. There's 18, so you can go through them single pretty quick, or you can try to lump them together, but...
We've already, yeah, let's just get through these. Let's get through them. So we'll need a motion on, well, unfortunately, I can't, I have it up on my phone here because my iPad is not responding.
So with Article 13, is that where we're beginning on this?
So starting with Article 13.
So Article 13, the salary is applicable.
So we'll need a recommendation or a motion on each one, favorable or unfavorable, and then we'll go from there.
I mean, I could lump the first three together. So move, or second would move favorable recommendation on Article 13, 14, and 15.
Second.
Okay, so 13, salaries continue to prove revolving funds, and 15 being, can I get down there?
Pay the last year's bills.
Pay the last year's bill, okay. So we have a motion to favorable for Articles 13, 14, and 15. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Favorable, okay. Article 16, General Fund for Fiscal Year 2016.
Favorable action.
Okay, we have a motion for favorable.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have favorable action on Article 16. Article 17?
Move favorable action.
Okay, let's just get to that article.
I'm sorry, it's a little...
Sorry, yeah, the technology's a little behind you.
The buzzer got in the way. Sorry.
Article 17, appropriation for the Water Enterprise Fund for Fiscal Year 2016, favorable?
Favorable action.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Article 18, appropriation for the Sewer Enterprise Fund for Fiscal Year 2016. Do I have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I was going to say...
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 19, appropriation for the Stevens Estate Enterprise Fund for Fiscal Year 2016. Do I have a motion?
Favorable action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And as we know, the Stevens Estate has been turning a profit these last few years, so that's a great thing. So hopefully, we'll continue with that. I think we're on track to continue with that. So we have a motion and a second for favorable. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Way best.
Okay, let's go down to Article, what's the next one? Article 20, appropriation for the Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Year 2016. Do I have a motion?
Favorable action. Second.
Although, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 21, transfer to stabilization to see if the town will vote to transfer $64,412 from available funds to free cash for stabilization fund. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, we have favorable action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Please don't, it'll only require a $64,000 vote to have the town reach its 5% of general fund revenues goal.
We put balloons up and a sign. It's awesome.
Make sure we mention that. That's a great, great goal that we've reached.
Amazing.
Okay. Article 22, transfer to stable, capital stabilization to see if the town will vote to transfer 213 from available funds to free cash for capital stabilization. Do I have a motion?
Unfavorable action.
Second.
Any discussion on that article? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 23, transfer of funds from Health Insurance Trust Fund to other post-employment benefits OPEB liability trust fund.
Second.
Discussion?
It's only on the town side, right?
Correct.
Great.
What's the question, Don?
It's only on the town side.
That's the town question, not the employee's question.
It's going into a town reserve for the open.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
The state wants to give us stabilization money.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Special education stabilization. Can we take a few of these? We've got a couple. Okay, we're almost done. Article 24, Special Education Stabilization Fund, to see if the town will vote to establish a Special Education Stabilization Fund for the purpose of reserving funds to pay expenses related to special education.
Well, I felt he was so, we all agreed, but he was very outspoken with that. Go ahead.
Outspoken, yeah.
In a positive way.
Motion to give favorable action to Article 24.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 25, transfer of funds to Special Education Stabilization Fund to see if the town will vote to transfer $750,000 free cash to that, to actually fund that account.
Motion to give favorable action to Article 25.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 26, Report of the Community Preservation Committee, Appropriation from Community Preservation Committee Fund. We saw the presentation earlier tonight from Mr. Simons. Do we... Do we have a recommendation on this one?
Move favorable action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great list.
It is a good list. Okay, now, these, are we going to do the solar tonight or...
You can take them now or take them at the next meeting. They're considered financial articles, but you can do what you like.
Okay, there are three new articles that have been added, or, I shouldn't say new articles, there are three articles around a pilot solar farm that would be up at 1600 Osgood Street, and the three Articles, 27 is the authorization for a pilot for the solar, Article 28 is the authorization for a pilot for the solar installation, and Article 29 is authorization for a net metering power purchase agreement.
Just for some clarification, 27 is for, to provide the authority to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement associated with a solar install at 1600 Osgood. 28 is a similar article, but instead for property at Brooks School, which is a proposed solar install at that location. And the third article is for what's called a net metering purchase agreement, again, associated with 1600 Osgood. So, 27 and 29 are Osgood-related, 28 is Brooks-related.
Could you explain a little bit about that net metering?
Sure. So, when people, when organizations install solar projects, do solar developments, they typically get two possible uses out of those. Either they're close enough to the energy-producing or consuming source that they take the energy off the solar panels and they use them to offset their costs, typically, obviously, of electricity, which is what the Brooks School project will be. They'll generate solar power from the panels on a lot across the street from the school, and their plan would be to use that solar energy to offset the electricity costs. In some cases, the developer, which is a term used in the business, uses the solar energy to, in essence, develop credits.
Oh, yeah.
For the purpose of, they're basically selling energy back to the grid, and those generate credits, like we consider any kind of credit on a bill. And in those cases, municipalities are allowed to buy those credits back. So, an example would be that we pay the developer 90 cents for every credit, but that credit's value is a dollar on our electricity bill. Or, excuse me, we pay the 90 cents, but it takes a dollar off the bill. So, by buying the credits from these solar developers, we, in turn, as municipality, reduce our energy bills, and it literally is a subtraction from our energy costs directly on our bills. Now, we have, we consume 9.5 million kilowatt-hours in electricity annually across all public buildings. It's a lot, that's a lot, by the way. I didn't know what that was. That's why, it's a lot of electricity. After the ESCO project, we think that number's going to decline by close to 20%, but will get close. We still use a tremendous amount of electricity. What we would do in this case is buy these credits at less than full vase value, and by buying them, we then could apply them to our existing electrical bills, which would reduce our electricity costs. So, there's no risk to the community to get into one of these agreements. We're able to buy them under the statute. We get a discount to electricity and, in turn, reduce our energy costs.
One question, all these are payment in lieu of taxes, right?
No, they're two different, there's two different articles here. 27 and 28 are pilot or payment in lieu of tax agreements.
Yeah.
Selectman Spadelli's question was specific to the net metering credits. The net metering credits are not pilot agreements, they are discounts to our electricity bill. The pilot agreements are different.
I suppose the question I'm trying to get at, all the people who have their own private solar, is your assessment of how it's going to go up?
No, this is specific to two commercial-level developments. This has nothing to do with residential solar, in which we don't tax residential solar. This is specific to two large commercial installations. One that would be at the Brooks property, Brooks School property on Grapevine Road, across the street from the school, what's proposed to be 2 million kilowatt-hours. It's a big install. And the possibility of an installation somewhere on the 1600 Osgood property, which could be three to four times that size. So, these have nothing to do with residential solar.
So, what I'm trying to get is, they're paying us money instead of paying taxes. So, if they're doing that, is it going to come down the pipeline on people in town who have solar? Are they going to have their property increased?
Nope. Every payment in lieu of taxes agreement requires the approval of town meeting, and they're for commercial developments, not for residential taxes. This has no impact on residential installation of solar. This is simply about what I would define as commercial developments.
More, more residential solar.
Yep.
And this is, so the reason for this is really twofold. One is that, from a community's perspective, we know upfront what the value of the taxes we're going to generate from the install of that equipment is going to be. It's not disputed in terms of a form of an abatement request or dispute of value as to the equipment's cost. We negotiate that agreement in advance, in conjunction with the assessor and the board and myself, and come to what is, in lieu of tax payment, a payment by the developer for the costs associated with installing those solar panels. It defines for us a 20-year period in which we know for certain exactly what they're going to pay. The benefit to the developer is, from a financing perspective, they know exactly what they're going to pay. It's not subject to variation because of some dispute about value. And so, the purpose of the pilot agreement is to create certainty, both from municipal perspective and the business perspective. These kinds of solar power agreements and articles are now littering town meeting warrants everywhere. I think you could find a couple of dozen just by running a search on solar pilot articles throughout Massachusetts. Department of Revenue suggests this methodology when getting into business with solar developers, and the language seen here has been approved by council and is consistent with the Department of Revenue's recommended format.
So, what happens if they just choose not to, we don't want to pay pilot?
Then, in essence, have violated the agreement in terms of taxes, and there'll be remedies within the pilot agreement to do that. They'd be subject to regular taxation.
So, you're not really seeing a downside to these articles, is what you're saying?
No, it really provides certainty in an industry where there's less than perfect certainty.
Okay. Move approval.
Okay, so, you're moving approval for all three?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion for approval. Second, all those, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's move to Article 30, which is a citizen's petition for change of voting age to 16 for town election. Do I have a motion?
Not to approve. But Phil, don't...
Phil, you can make your motion.
There's a motion on the table.
There is?
Okay, you made a motion to negative...
Unfavorable.
Unfavorable.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor in this vote?
It's not a time for discussion, Mr. Chair. I thought that the four students that came tonight, because all four students at North Andover High School did a very good job, and the very fact that they went through the legwork of presenting this to us, not just even presenting this to us, but actually going through the legwork of collecting signatures, and what will inevitably be a discussion at town meeting where perhaps there's a lot of passion. I think that it's really admirable. It's something that 99% of voters in this town have probably never done, myself included, as far as presenting a petition. I think it's timely. We've just seen an election where nine out of 10 voters, as Adam mentioned, chose not to participate in a local election. I think we all have run campaigns and seen just how bright and savvy, I mean, Mr. Stewart, I do believe at the time you first won your seat back on this board of selectmen, half the people in that photo with you were under the age of 18. What did you call them, Don?
Angels.
Angels, you're angels. I do believe so. So, with their wings, they flew you back onto this board. How funny is that? And I think there's a lot to be said that in town government where there's just not that much interest among most voters. Everybody gets jazzed up about presidential elections. I say, you know, let's give favorable action to this, or, I guess, because there's a motion on the floor, I would say that I'm opposed to the motion to give unfavorable action because I think they've certainly shown that they have the ability to comprehend government.
They do.
And Ms. Watson, you and I were recently called out on Facebook for apparently proposing this, so there's quite a few adults who do not understand. And as Mr. Tripp mentioned, he made many, many great examples of how the law restricts how people can do certain things based on their age, which is exactly why these young men and women came to us today, to ask that we change the law so that we don't place those same restrictions on those 16- and 17-year-olds who have proven themselves to be quite capable, in fact, perhaps more capable than many of their...
Those four, maybe, but the masses are children, so I'm voting in the negative.
With all due respect, Ms. Watson, the masses of 18 and over chose not to participate in the last election as well.
That's true, and with all due respect, they were phenomenal.
Oh, they're phenomenal kids. Phenomenal kids.
And we all know, we know them, they've all worked on campaigns, we've seen them all.
Yeah, they're great.
And they're phenomenal young adults. My concern is that a 16-year-old, as Mr. Tripp had said, and I thought about this earlier, that they can't enter into a contract.
Yeah, that's mine.
To be able to vote on something that is binding for people that they can't even, then, you know, they don't even have the legal status...
They can't sign documents when we close on buildings. They can't sign a document.
So, what you're saying is they're...
They're incapable.
They can't enter a contract, but we're asking them to enter into a contract with their fellow citizens in the public.
Is that a requirement? And that's actually, no, but it's almost too bad Joyce isn't here. Is that a requirement of every voter? Or if somebody has proven that they are incapable of entering a contract when they're over the age of 18, for whatever reason, perhaps that they are an adult who has Alzheimer's and has given away their right of attorney to somebody else, do they lose their right to vote as well?
No, it's not, no. I don't believe they do, but...
I think if they don't have mental capacity, they're...
But they can still vote.
I don't think they vote. No, I don't think they can, so I don't know.
I don't know.
Ultimately, my defense of the proposal is that they do have, I think 16- and 17-year-olds have, regardless of those four individuals, I think 16- and 17-year-olds absolutely have the ability to understand the scope of government, and if they so choose to exercise, if we give this right and the legislature approves it, if they chose to exercise it...
Legislature would never approve it, in my opinion.
I hope this board doesn't base every decision on whether or not the legislature approves or not approves of its decisions.
Yeah. It's ridiculous. I will tell you, though, Phil, that, you know what, the legal system has now raised the age for juvenile offenders to be tried as an adult.
I was just going to say that. Are you comfortable with that?
And they did that because of the science and of the kids just not having the mental capacity as an adult, that they are not in a position to make wise decisions. So, when you have the court systems and the juvenile systems saying, these kids are just, they're not ready.
We don't allow people to become president until they're in their 40s.
35, Ms. Watson.
Oh, 35, okay. Grown up.
But the point is, the point is, there's a time and a place for everything, and, you know, there's many, many outlets. They helped on your campaign, they've helped on Donnie's campaign, and that is fantastic.
They worked against my campaign.
They did work against...
I do remember a young man named Jake McCoy, who was under the eligibility to help in your campaign, Ms. Watson.
But there's also their student council, there's so many other outlets that they can hone and get greater knowledge. They also haven't gone through the whole process of a high school education that does all the civic, all the...
With all, I have to interrupt because we don't require that of voters, that they have a high school education. So, to suggest that they need to have a high school education to be effective voters, we allow people to vote who do not have high school educations.
They have partial high school education.
That is not necessarily true. You do not have to be an educated person to be a registered voter. You have to be the age of 18 and a citizen of...
But in the state of Massachusetts, you can't drop out of high school at 13.
You could drop out of, you could be, you could drop out of high school in another state and turn 40 years old and move to the state of Massachusetts and not have anything standing in the way of you being a registered voter. So, to suggest, there is no requirement, no education requirement, and no ability to understand, in fact, however, these 16- and 17-year-olds have proven that there is the ability for them to understand what's before them. In fact, that they're willing to go to this step shows that there's a passion, and at the very least...
A passion for kids, the kids, their children, legally, their children. Can we move the vote?
And that's what we're discussing, whether or not we can legally change it to include them in this.
They're legally their children. There's a motion and a second. Can we move the vote at 10:10?
Is there any...
With all due respect.
I think one thing that they forgot to mention is that there are municipalities in this country that currently do allow 16-year-olds to vote. There are, I believe, two municipalities, off the top of my head, in the state of Maryland that do allow 16-year-olds to participate as voters, so we're not even blazing a new trail.
In Maryland?
Yes.
The state of Maryland or the District of Columbia?
Yeah.
Two communities in the state of Maryland.
Just in local?
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, let's move to vote, and I appreciate the passionate discussions on this item.
On the 16-year-old.
Obviously, this is going to be our backyard chicken item for this year.
Hey, and I think you made a great decision about putting it at the, I really mean this,[1480.83] Hey, and I think you made a great decision about putting it at the, I really mean this, Mr. Chairman, I think it was a great decision to put it at the end, because if that's what keeps people at town meeting, to hear us discuss our $100 million budget, well then, by all means, let's put this on the agenda than every year.
So, so we have a motion for unfavorable action, we have a second. So, a vote of yea would be for unfavorable action. So...
Today, just add one bit of new information for anyone who has not made a decision, this board can also choose to take no action.
Take first action.
We said...
We have to close, okay. So, all those in favor of unfavorable action, all those?
In favor of unfavorable action?
So, in favor of the motion?
Aye.
So, there's three. Donnie, I'm sorry, four?
No.
No, okay, so let the record state, that was a unfavorable four to one. We will be asked at town meeting who the four to one was, so...
I think I can speak for the majority of the board, it's not unfavorable action against these terrific kids.
Oh, of course, on these kids.
It's just on the article.
Big bright futures.
Okay, last article for discussion tonight, Article 31, Citizens Petition for the General Court, Special Act Change in Liquor Quota. We had the Cork Stop represented here tonight by Frank and Valerie, I believe are namesless. So, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's an existing business that currently sells alcohol that looks to expand its service to other types of alcoholic beverages, so...
I'm of the belief local municipalities should be in charge of their liquor licenses anyway, and hopefully soon, we will be.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, favorable action on that one. Okay, so that concludes those articles up for vote.
This is all the boards aware, the four selling articles will be presented and voted at your April 27th meeting, but because the book will have gone to press, that will reflect the selectmen's recommendation as to be made at town meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, next, public hearing. We are about to hear, or I believe this was a continued public hearing that we had with National Grid regarding some telephone poll changes. I believe this was on Green Street.
Grape Pond.
Grape Pond?
Oh.
Grape Pond, right?
Oh, the Green Street one, we're not listening, we're not hearing that one. I don't think it's intended, sorry. Sorry, my apologies, I thought it was the Green Street one.
Good evening. Excuse me, David Boucher, Senior Designer at National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street in North Andover. We were here previously about Grape Pond Road, placement of a poll. And from what I understand, there were some conditions that the staff engineer, Patrick Higgins, had that he wanted fulfilled by us, these conditions. I spoke with Patrick, I gave him a call, and went over the issues, his wants and needs, and came to the conclusion that National Grid has no problem with any of those conditions in order to place a poll on Grape Pond Road. The poll is in the public way, and it will be in the public way, 25 feet from an existing poll. It's a new poll that we want to set, that will go underground from there onto the property of the Sewer Department for their project to install equipment. And if the town sees fit, it would enable us to go forward with this.
Okay, so, do we have any, so are you all set with your...
Yes.
Do we have anyone here that wants to speak to this issue?
Move.
Okay, seeing no one?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the National Grid and Verizon New England Joint Poll Petition Number 16210170. Grape Pond Road is presented.
I have a second.
No?
You know, I honestly, I've said this so many times at this meeting before, and there is that poll on Middlesex Street that we've never got an answer, and I've said in prior meetings that I'm not going to vote on anything until we get an answer on that poll, that it's literally, here's somebody's help, and it's like this. And I said it at the last meeting as well. The people who live under that poll have asked for relief on that. It was, we're on the record at the last meeting to give us an answer on that poll. And I'm really frustrated at...
I can understand your frustration.
I drive by that poll every day, it freaks me out.
It's really bad.
It does.
I have, I have a contact from the company. I have a phone number and a name right now that I can give you that corresponds with the towns and municipalities in North Andover is jurisdiction. So, that's how our company is handling it. You can speak with him about the double polls. Each of the towns have issues with double polls.
This isn't a double poll.
It's not a double poll.
Oh, it's a poll.
I'm sorry.
Every morning, I drive the camera to school.
Oh, it's leaning.
It's crazy, scary.
And this is the house, and it's like...
It's the Glenn's old house.
Okay.
There's a family that lives in there, and they have asked you, we have asked you at several meetings, we just asked you at our, not you in particular, maybe on, in the past we've asked you...
What you need to do is, have you called the company to put in an inquiry?
It's in the minutes that I spoke to the person just at our last meeting about that poll.
You spoke to that person at the meeting. Did you call the company?
When someone says, "I'll take down the information and get back to you," I kind of assume that when I'm speaking to National Grid that they would address it.
I didn't know he said that, yeah. Normally, I would tell you as a customer, a resident...
But they, the customer has called.
They have, okay, I didn't know that. If they've called and we haven't responded to it, I don't...
It's been years, not just a couple months.
What's the, what's the address?
It's in front of approximately 60 Middlesex. It's on...
60, six zero?
Yeah, it's just before, when you're going down Middlesex Street.
Right on the corner of that.
You can't miss it.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. I'll do something about it. I'm not sure what happened, what happened last time. Can't speak for my fellow employee. Certainly, we don't want to just push it to the side or forget about you. We take everything that you say to us seriously, so...
If we don't vote on this tonight, what problems does it face, Mr. Manager, for that Grape Pond Road project?
So, right now, we have a motion, we don't have a second, so we really can't vote on it.
For the pump station, right?
Yeah, the request before you is to do some work associated with pump station improvements. I don't have a specific deadline as to when the critical date is. My guess is it's not between now and next meeting.
Okay.
But you certainly, I wouldn't want to wait longer than that because it may prevent us in terms of bidding.
Dave, who's the person you were gonna, who's name were you gonna use just now?
Joe.
Morocco?
Yes.
I'm meeting with them tomorrow afternoon at 2:00.
Okay, you're meeting with Joe, can you bring that up? Okay, so Dave, it looks like we may not be able to vote on this tonight since we don't have a second on this. So, I think we'll have to have you come back on this one.
Okay.
And we will take it up at our next meeting on April 27th.
April 20?
April 27th. We'll try to move it to the, earlier in the agenda to try to accommodate you because I appreciate you sitting for a long time for this meeting.
I think that's school vacation week, it might not be me.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, will the appropriate action be to motion to table this until next?
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
No, I'm in labor.
So, we need a motion to continue this hearing then.
Motion to continue this hearing at our next meeting on April 27th.
All those, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Will that be 7:00 or 7:30?
Oh, God, not 7:30.
Well, the meeting starts at 7:00. We'll try to get, we'll try to move it up a little bit to accommodate...
Raise your hand if we forget.
Well, you said...
It's the week, right?
You know, you said it might not be the school vacation week.
No, you said it's the week later.
Oh, okay.
I'll see what we can do for 60 Middlesex, and obviously bring it up to Joe when he's here tomorrow, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dave. Okay, moving along, old business. We have an update of the status of the BioSolids GLSD project.
Mr. Chairman, as you may remember, a couple of months ago, Sherry Cousins, who's the Executive Director of the GLSD, came before the board with an update on the proposed BioSolids project at the GLSD. This was the idea of expanding by one the number of anaerobic digesters that are at the facility. Currently, there are three that process the waste that comes in from the six districts that provide sewage to the GLSD. The idea was to add this food product, which had become, under DEP regulations, there were some requirements that food waste, I think it's more than one ton per week produced by restaurants now needs to be processed in a different manner than it historically had been processed. And the idea was to add capacity at the GLSD to process this type of waste. The board heard Ms. Cousins' presentation, had a series of questions associated with the project, everything from traffic to route of travel for trucks, to the possibility of odors and the like. And as a result of that, the dialogue with the GLSD has continued. I think at the time, we indicated that the GLSD had voted for preliminary design of the expansion of the facility and that they would do to vote on the full design of the expansion of the facility at their April meeting that, having attended the last meeting, that vote was moved from April until May. So, no vote has been taken relative to paying for the design costs associated with adding an additional digester. I'm working to try to find a company that can conduct an impact study to work with the GLSD to define those sort of positives and negatives as a result of the work, the impact on the community in North Andover here, and hope to have that completed in time for both this board to have a view at it and take a look and have a reaction to it, and also in advance of the May intended vote of the GLSD for the design of the project, so that the board members would also have that document as well.
Mr. Manager, thank you for my request to look into the impact study. We owe the neighbors and ourselves good information, just to see, and hopefully, there won't be any, and it'll be a great project. But we're trailblazing. This project has not been in Massachusetts. We have to travel to Maine to see a similar project. And Donnie knows, your mother knows, when that plant was bad, your probably family knows. When it was bad, it was very bad. Well, Phil was, Phil didn't live too far away when it was bad. As I said, your family, he's included in the family.
When it was bad, it was bad.
Very bad. So, I appreciate you taking that on, and I will be driving up to Maine to see what this facility looks like firsthand, and...
And we also have a scheduled tour of the GLSD, May 4th, I believe, is?
First, I think.
May 1st?
I might be wrong, but it's first.
May 1st, all right.
May 1st, what time?
Okay, any other comments or discussion? New business, we have nothing on the new business. Public comment. Come on up, state your name, address.
You're so patient.
Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone.
It's almost afternoon.
That was good, that was great.
With the meetings I have tomorrow morning, it might be morning. My name is Dro Kanayan. I live at 156 Palomino Drive up in North Andover, heading toward where Andover Flower Farm used to be. I am an American of Armenian descent who's been residing in North Andover for about 10 years now. As you may or may not know, April 24th this year is the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide where one and a half millions Armenians perished at the hands of the Ottoman Empire during World War I. This was the first human rights violation of the 20th century, and Armenians alongside other nationalities across the world will be remembering this. On Sunday, Pope Francis even held a special commemorative service, and he did the full two hours that we do. So, it was a very moving service, but it was really a reaffirmation to the world of what had happened at that time. Since that time, we continue to see other human rights violations continue. On grand scams, we talked about the Jewish Holocaust, Cambodian genocide, more recently Rwanda, Bosnia, Sudan. But even on a very local level, and I do call this a base human rights violation, is bullying. We see it these days in school. We talk about it for the last 15 years. If we're, and that is the most basic form of oppression. That's where it starts. The Armenian-American community in North Andover has been active in Massachusetts, and specifically North Andover for many years. As I look, well, as I saw in the attendance earlier, fortunately, there are people I knew who had very good friends who are Armenian. Their step on, Father Stepan Baljian is the pastor here at North Andover Church. He and the other pastors have spent years building, explaining, working with our culture, but other Christian cultures here in North Andover to develop a more tolerant community, have people get along, working very closely with St. Mike's over the years. My sister-in-law, Leslie Aznoyan, who lives in Levin Alcott Way, she's a businessperson who has spent time working in a business to help develop the economy. And many of you would remember Albert Melfsesian, who passed away a few years ago.
He was my very good friend.
He was a very good friend of mine.
Very involved in this cause.
And, you know, Albert, I, when Charlotte passed away, and you may not know, but when he actually passed away, it was Charlotte's birthday.
I did know that.
Yeah. And Al always spoke very highly of working with you guys, everybody here, and he took it very personally. Al also did, and he became kind of a father figure to me because my father passed away years before, and I grew up in Houston. So, New England was, while I was born here, kind of a return home. And, you know, he actively, not just helped Armenians, but he helped Americans. You know, he was there for the elderly to take them to the hospitals, to take them to sick thing, helped develop the town government, helped develop things, work with IMEC to send medical equipment to third world countries. You have IMEC, you know, the headquarters where the storage, right off Osgood Street. As a citizen of the town of North Andover, myself, other Armenians, and other nationalities who have suffered as we had, would like to host, we ask a favor. We'd like to see the Armenian flag flown at half mast at town hall on April 24th. We're not asking for political speeches, we're not asking for a demonstration. A simple gesture to commemorate a great atrocity that happened to people, but also as a gesture recognized as a symbol against all human rights violations that continue to occur today. Thank you.
Okay, so, I guess the request is to have that, the Armenian flag. I'm not sure the protocol with the US flag has to be...
It's my understanding that the, that no flag can be flown higher than the American flag.
That's true.
And cannot be any bigger than the American flag. If I'm correct, the American flag is about three by five, and we can get, the Armenian flag, we can get the exact same size. Well, as I said, flag at half...
You know if it can be flown on the same pole as the American flag?
I don't believe it can.
No.
Then we can't take it down.
So, we have to, that's what we'd have to...
I don't, I mean, you would know better, but my understanding...
I'm pretty sure the answer is no, but I wanted to double check. Okay, so we'd have to...
But what we're sounding, what you're hearing from us, we have to look into the proper flag etiquette and protocol.
Okay.
And if we can support it, because how many polls do we have? We have just the one poll.
Well, it's three, it's a three-tiered.
Because there's the state flag right out there as well.
And then the town flag. I think...
Is there precedent for this?
Well, that's the other thing, we really need to study, but I think at the very least, we could at least, I think the board would consider, I don't want to speak for the board, I'm just putting this out as, is at least a proclamation.
Yes.
From us declaring...
We would definitely welcome the proclamation.
Can I, can I make a suggestion as well? And we can certainly check on to what the protocol is, so, and then communicate back to you. But a suggestion may be going to the legislative delegation. We often receive direction about flag protocol, which is delegated, depending on how you interpret it, to the local governments, not just the federal government. And you may generate support at the state level and getting direction from them on protocol, which typically we get as it relates to the use of the flag. It sounds like there would be support to get some legislative support, which may help communities who have an interest in doing this.
Well, I do know there are communities in this Merrimack Valley alone that haven't had an issue with raising the flag. If you all remember last year Lowell has an Armenian monument, they've raised the flag every year. Chelmsford is going to raise a flag on town property this year. Haverhill does it, and Peabody as well.
But we also don't meet before the 24th as well, so this is something...
So, we'd have to either take a vote at this point with some contingencies, or, I mean, definitely the proclamation is something that we can take a vote on and get that written up. But I think with a request for the flag, we would need to understand the protocol, how we could support it, and...
Could I offer this? Could we, could we accept your offer of the proclamation with a contingent that a vote on the flag be raised at some point in the next, if it passes within the next month as a gesture at all? If it meets the criteria?
I would be very concerned about future requests then, about different nationalities. I completely, I would love to do whatever is traditionally done by this board to recognize, and you mentioned a proclamation. I would be concerned about the comments, only from my prior professional experience, when flags are even flown at half mast, quite, you'd be surprised how many people take notice and actually call, I imagine, town hall asking why.
And Senator Brooke died. I was just going to say, we had a senator pass, and you cannot raise that flag until he's put in the ground. And because of the winter, I mean, we had flags at half mast forever this past winter, and the amount of emails, phone calls, and what have you, I mean...
Is it a raising, is it raised, is it brought up and then brought down? Or does it stay down for a long period of time?
You could bring it up and keep it up, and then take it back down when you're done, I mean...
Similar to what you do on the 9/11?
You know, and the thing is, I will say, yes, you are correct that it will generate questions. But I think the questions will be more along, since most people don't know what the Armenian genocide even was.
No, you're right, you're right about that.
I agree with that, and I agree, there probably needs to be more publication, but I'm getting tired, sorry.
No, no, we're recognizing, yeah.
More publicity, thank you, in regards to it, so that we never forget. I'm not comfortable raising another country's flag, I'm just not. But I believe in a proclamation, and I think that we could do as much as we could as a community to recognize the 100th anniversary, absolutely.
Father, do you have a flagpole in front of the church?
Unfortunately, we don't.
Oh.
Because that's a perfect location, you're right there.
It is, it is, we might as well be town hall, right?
Yeah.
Because we're right in the middle. By the way, I'm also a North Andover resident as well, 38 Green Hill Ave., and very happy to be here tonight. I just wanted to sort of reiterate the statements of Mr. Kanayan that we would appreciate anything that this Board of Selectmen would do to bring publicity to this cause.
I think the sentiment's there, it sounds like, and...
Is this something that we can work on and maybe with your assistance, work into the proclamation that...
Yes, we can, yeah, we can come up with wording for a proclamation.
And then what we would, it's worded in such a way where we say whereas, and therefore, and...
We'd want to understand that.
So be it known, and that kind of thing.
The dates, the time, I mean, the...
Sure, there's a lot of details for that.
Do you, do you want this, though, to happen in the month of May?
Well, actually, in the ideal world, in the ideal world...
The month of May passes.
And understanding that probably timing is tight. You know, if we could get a proclamation, yeah, in the month of May, that would be great, you know, because right now, it's best, we have school vacation week, your next meeting's not until April 27th.
Yes.
So, I mean, beggars can't be choosers in certain levels.
If we were to create the proclamation, where would we actually read that off?
I guess at our next meeting.
Yeah, we could do it at, that's what I was suggesting, at the next meeting, April 27th.
Okay.
He'll read it, and then he will present it to, if you bring a contingency of people in.
We'll bring North Andover on meetings.
Yeah. I think you do, I think they're accurate.
So, could I ask you to work with Laurie on the wording of the proclamation, or what some of the detailed facts are that we could include in the proclamation? And then we will, we'll prepare that for our next meeting and read that into the record. We can also publicize it on the social media.
Okay, great. And Laurie, your contact details on the website? Okay, so I'll reach out to you this week. So, well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you for coming and waiting patiently, actually.
Okay, do we have other public comment?
Just before you leave, Alma Session would be very proud of you this evening.
No other public comment. Okay, Town Managers' Report.
Yes.
I'm good.
All right, next meeting will be...
No questions?
Questions.
We'll have to work on Phil to take Phil's role.
You'll take Phil's role, of course.
We should have actually filled that role earlier as the question asker.
Well, I actually popped my head in, and my question, my one question for the Town Manager was whether or not we could add, no, oh, I'm sorry, oh. Was whether or not we could add, because in the report, it included crime statistics for...